The planning and zoning for Tuesday, August 15th, 2023 to order. Our first item is Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Our first item on our agenda is public participation. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on something that is not on our agenda? Please step forward. Hearing and seeing none. We have two sets of minutes. I gave Michelle a couple minor comments or corrections that were probably just typographical. Does anybody else have anything on the minutes? Mr. Wagner?
I have one word I want to pick up. This is in the July 25th minutes. It would be page four. And there's a paragraph that says Chair Pasacana said the three petitionings have been accepted. I'd like to say received because I think accepting is a formal process. So that's it.
Yep, okay. Any other questions, corrections, comments? We can adopt these by consensus. Agreed?
Agreed.
Okay. Okay, we'll get right into new business. We have application 23-13P GDS estimating. Do we have somebody here to represent the applicant? Okay. Okay, you're on now, Bill. Are you lit?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, I'm with PDS Engineering and Construction and I'm representing GDS estimating and Ken Jeski for application 2313P. Ken's been in this location for 10 years, fabricates and stores glass curtain wall systems, glass curtain wall products. The facility is a combination of office, storage, and assembly. Parcel is zoned industrial and the parcel consists of 3.7 acres. It currently has two buildings. Up here on the site plan up on the screen is this building and this building, which consists of 10,325 square feet. The two proposed buildings are the ones in gray. This one is 6,747 square feet and this proposed building over here is 2,275 square feet. The total square footage of all four buildings will be 19,347 square feet and the maximum allowable coverage for this property is 50%. And with these buildings, we'll only be at 15.37%. So we're fully comply in that respect. Ken's company currently has 23 employees. Will not be adding any new employees as a result of this expansion and there'll be no new truck traffic added for his operations. Based on the square footage of office, manufacturing, and storage space, we're required to provide 47 new parking spaces, including two handicap spaces. To meet this, we're providing 31 spaces there along this area here, including three handicap spaces. And back in this area, we're providing 16 reserve parking spaces. So we'll meet the 47 parking space requirement easily. Two of these spaces will be prepared for electrical vehicle charging capability. When Ken came to us for this project, he had a problem with impervious coverage and encroaching on setbacks. To solve that problem, he's purchasing more land. He's purchasing 30 feet of additional land on the west side of the property over here and then 50 feet of additional land in the width of the back on the north side of the property. So once he does that, he will fully comply with all the buffers setbacks inside yards. So the allowable impervious coverage for this site is 65%. With the purchase of the new land, the impervious coverage will now be 57.05%. This includes all the paved areas, building areas, gravel areas, future reserved parking areas. So we'll be all fully compliant with impervious coverage. Several years ago, Ken accidentally filled in over here 120 square foot portion of wetlands. So to mitigate that, with this new project, we're adding 1,200 square feet of wetlands in this area here. And we've been through Wetlands Commission and had that submitted and had it all approved. So we're good there. We've added new drainage, new drainage swale here to accommodate the runoff from the new pavement and the new buildings. Wetlands is asking us to also extend this swale up around here up to the wetlands area. So that's, that'll be something that we'll be doing for them. See, we've also increased the size of the detention basin on the north corner of the property, the northeast corner, to accommodate the additional runoff from the new buildings and the new paved areas. So let's go to the next plan. This is the site lighting layout plan. So with this project, we haven't added any light poles, mostly just relocated wall packs from the exterior wall of the old building, which was, this is the old exterior wall, to the exterior wall of the new addition. Did the same thing over here, relocated wall packs from this wall over to the new wall. We did add two new wall packs just at the front of the building. But we're using all full cutoff lights and this, his processes, his production doesn't create any noise. It's all done inside. There are no residents, residences in the area that would be impacted anyways by sound or, or light from this, emanating from this site. The, see, on the west and north side is property owned by Scrap Metal Yard. And over on the east side, it's got to be 500 feet to the nearest residence. It's fully wooded between the two properties. Go to the next drawing. So this is a rendering of the new building. So, I should say, the new addition. So we're doubling the size of the building on the, looking at it from the front. The right side is existing, so you could see, and the left side is the new addition. We're using all the same identical siding as the original building, identical masonry. We're going to create another entrance. It's identical to the existing entrance. So it's really going to be a seamless look when we're done with this, the new addition, using all the same construction products that we used the first time. All the same colors. Let's see, this is just a floor plan of that, this building. This is the existing portion on the left is the new, the new addition. This is just the elevations, similar to what we just showed you in the rendering. We also have the west elevation shown and the north elevation. This is the building in the back. This is the floor plan and elevations. This is the south elevation that you could see from the street. So it's the same thing, we're using the same siding materials, all the same metal building trim, same windows, everything's going to be the same color. So again, the transition will look seamless from one, from the old construction to the new. Okay, this is the landscape drawings. Let's slide this down just a little bit. So the landscaping on the facility currently is, it's very well landscaped. So we didn't have to add too much to, to the project for this building. We're, we're adding four calipari pear trees, one here, here, one here, and one at the corner of the building. Then we have a shrub bed along the front of the new building, right there. And so in there, we're going to add eight rhododendrons, six ground covered unipers, three Japanese holly, all on mulch beds. The wetlands area over here will receive some specialty wetlands plantings. But like I said, the landscaping is already in great shape there. So we didn't have to do too much, just basically repeated what was in front of the existing building again onto the new addition. Let's see. Go down one more sheet. There we are. So those for back to erosion control. Yeah, so we have, during construction, we'll have an anti-tracking pad right here. We have silt fence all around the construction areas. It's that dark line, dash line. We're placing silt sacks in all the catch basins during construction. We have a riprap leak off here from the paved, new paved area into the drainage swale. So we've completed the site design in accordance with all the town South Windsor Engineering Department requirements. Wetlands had several comments, which we agreed to and are incorporating them into our plans. See, in April, Michelle sent a memo to us. She had eight comments and we've incorporated, we agree with all those comments that she came up with. So we're going to incorporate all those into the plans. Those, one that's a, one exception is the lot line revision. So we can't, I guess the way that'll work is once we get conditional approval from the town and through planning and zoning, then Ken will buy, purchase the land and at that time he can file a deed, you know, town records with the new lot line of the, the new property added on to his existing property. See, another item we didn't address is just under site plan comments. There's questions about existing structures on site that didn't have permits and Ken will address those separately as a condition of the approval. That's not something we're going to do through this plan. But we, we meet all other town requirements and we request your approval with those two conditions, one for the lot line revisions and one for the existing structure permits. Is any questions?
Does that complete your presentation?
Yes.
Okay. Then at this time, we'll turn to our Director of Planning, Michelle Leip.
Thank you. So this is a approval for a minor lot line revision and a site plan of development for a 5,200 square foot addition to existing industrial building and a 2,275 square foot addition to the existing storage building and supporting parking areas on property located 470 Governor's Highway in the industrial zone. We've had a good review of what the proposal is. To some of the zoning requirements, we allow 65% coverage. This proposal is 57.75% and that does include reserved parking in the event reserved parking was built. Proposed building height is proposed at 20 feet. We allow up to 40 feet. The parking requirement is 47 spaces. They, again, they're showing us 31 spaces with 16 spaces are shown in reserve. They are providing two EV charger spaces along the westerly parking area. The question I had at the time of the review is upon reviewing the history of the property, we did approve a site plan modification some years back. That site plan modification was never followed. It wasn't adhered to, however, some other structures were placed on site, maybe temporary, maybe permanent, wasn't quite sure. And so we questioned those and the building official would look for any structures that are going to remain to be permitted because they were not permitted at the time they were put up. Again, they meet zoning as far as setback requirements and those kinds of things. So up to the commission if they have any questions on that. There are some regulated wetlands on the property and as indicated, there was some filling that occurred over the years. So with this application, the applicant did have to address mitigation for that area of the previous disturbed wetland soils. The applicant did receive wetlands approval on July 18th requiring a 5,000 bond for erosion sedimentation measures, 5,000 for stormwater, and 5,000 for wetlands mitigation. The site is currently served by Public Water and Sewer, Water Pollution Control Authority. Typically wouldn't be required, however, the town engineer has requested some information related to the sewer flows. So I don't know when that information comes in. If necessary, they will be referred to WPCA. The fire marshal has reviewed the plans and has no comments. Design review reviewed the plans on March 4th and they forwarded a favorable review. The one comment I did want to make too is this does show a second curb cut onto Governor's Highway that will service both the back building in this new area. This would really be the, the only other curb cut for this property. And I do have some engineering comments. These engineering comments were discussed through the wetlands approval in the sense of the applicant and they haven't been incorporated yet, however, they've indicated their willingness to, but I would like to put a couple of them on the record just for the commission's benefit. So these are from Jeff Dulittle dated July 12th, 2023. He's suggesting to propose new driveway and parking aisle on the west side of the site, shown to be 30 feet wide, which is much wider than the existing driveway than he thinks it needs to be. He's proposed the driveway aisle be reduced to about 24 feet to reduce impervious coverage and max the existing driveway. Proposed sanitary sewer lateral and water service to the, or the building in the back needs to be 10 feet apart horizontally per the health building code. The existing betonex pavement around the existing building and containers shown as smaller gravel area on the previously approved plan. There are not spot elevations or contours in the area to verify drains properly. So he's looking for some more spot contours to be shown in the area. The drainage report shows an increase in peak runoff of storms as a result of existing proposed development. Town requires detention for developed sites retain water from all storms so the peak runoff development is at or below pre-development levels. Additional detention and or reduced impervious areas need to be provided for the site so there's no increase in runoff from this development for all storms. Smaller outlets orifice in the proposed outlet structure on the western side of the site needs to be considered. Show the elevation of the existing riprap emergency spillway in the northeast corner of the site. Where does the stormwater that discharges and stay or flow to consider discharging some stormwater offsite in this area? And then the question about what the peak average sewer flows are expected for the new development. If this application is approved, the two planning comments that I would request be incorporated would be that, I'm sorry, this should be labeled, it shouldn't be labeled a re-subdivision. The plans call it a re-subdivision. It's not. It's a lot line revision. So we should have a correct label on the plans. And also, as mentioned, new deeds would be required for both this property and the property that's losing the land. We do have a zoning data table verifying zoning compliance, but those would be required to be filed at the time of any MYLR filing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, I will open it up to Commissioners, Commissioner Bernstein. It's not a public hearing.
I didn't get your name, I'm sorry.
Bill Jodes.
Bill, how are you?
Very good.
I am curious, what's driving the need to increase your footprint so much?
Ken says just simply he needs more storage at the facility at this time for his products he's manufacturing.
Business is good?
Yes, yep, no complaints there.
How long do you anticipate it'll take to construct this?
This is a six month project.
Okay. I know that one of the commissioners will probably ask this question, so I'll beat him to it. Snowpack, talk to me about where you would be able to store snow that you have to move.
Oh, I could go back up to the top. So yeah, there's plenty of areas in the back here, along this area, around here on this side. There's pretty much, I'd say, half the perimeter of the site, we have areas that we can plow snow to.
Okay.
Yeah, plenty of, plenty of room on this particular project.
Do you see any need to increase or change the security that's on the site?
No, no, we're, he's fine with the way it is at this time.
That's all I have. Okay, Commissioner Kavik now?
Thank you. I was expecting Commissioner Bernstein to ask this question since he usually asks all the questions I'm thinking of. But the only one I have in my mind right now is, you know, in here it states that, you know, we're expecting either an expansion or two new buildings. I'm just curious if we're going to see, you know, projected, how much of an increase in traffic we're actually going to see.
He said, I asked him that exactly and he said he's not going to add any new employees. There's not going to be any additional truck traffic. So he just needs the area for storage of the products that he's producing now before they, there's a longer haul at his facility before they get out to job sites. So he just needs more storage.
So not a single new car is being projected?
No.
No additional trucks, nothing?
Nope.
Okay. Just wanted that on the record, thank you very much.
Commissioner Vettiri.
I want to thank both Commissioners for asking two of the three questions I had. The third one is, will there be any change in the shift times or will it say it be the same working hours that it is now?
Yeah, same, same working hours.
Okay, same number of employees?
Right.
Okay, thank you. That was it.
Commissioner Foley?
I have nothing.
Commissioner Wagner?
I was going to ask what was happening to the Quonset hut, but I finally found it on the drawing. So you're going to keep the Quonset hut, right?
That's up to Ken. That's not something that we've, we're addressing in the plan. He may remove it or he may get a permit to, to leave it there.
Our, Michelle Leip mentioned that you have two EV charging stations. I couldn't find them on the drawing.
Yep, they're in this area here. Zoom in, right there. This, this space and this space right here.
What drawing is that?
This says infrastructure to support two future EV level two charging stations. Drawing C, let's see, C 100.
So that's a little different than the drawing we, we got. You've modified the drawing there. I see, okay. All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner LeBlanc?
I'm all set. I have no questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Carey?
I'm all set.
Commissioner Kawarishi?
I have no questions.
Okay. And just for the record, a little housekeeping. Commissioner Dexter is absent tonight, so I'm going to seat Commissioner Carey for Commissioner Dexter. Okay, I just had a couple of questions here. On your C 100 drawing, close to where you had the EV charging stations, if you could scroll down a little bit further? I wanted EV station still in it, right there. Perfect, thank you. It says on my drawing that there is no curb there. Could you tell me why?
Oh yeah, that was to direct the flow into this riprap leak off into the drainage swale. So we put a curb there instead of having it just sheet flow directly in. That way we can get a little, we can get some treatment of the water as it goes into that drainage swale.
Okay, my concern with no curb there is snow removal.
Oh, there is, I'm sorry, there is a curb there now.
There is? I'm, I'm not seeing it on my drawing, but there is a curb there?
Yes.
Okay. But we should have a condition that no snow should be put in the proposed drainage swale or in the wetlands. I checked out the site and I saw other Conex containers on site that aren't labeled on your drawing. Specifically in the, is it south? Yeah, in the southeast or actually east driveway in front of the dumpster pad, you have the one on the left that's labeled shipping container. And there's also one on the pavement. There's also materials leaning against the shipping container. I'm guessing that this whole issue with the bigger building and everything will remedy having materials stored outside on screen?
Exactly. That's the reason for the, for the new buildings.
And the shipping container that's on the pavement now will disappear?
Let's see, we're going to, we do talk about relocating.
Yeah, but I, I believe the ones that were relocated on the print are noted on the print to be relocated in the back. But this one, you know, since I'm not seeing it, I do have a picture if you want to see it.
No, yeah, he'll, he'll have to make that disappear. If it's not on the, the plans we're submitting, he can't have it there in the future.
Okay. Michelle, was there any other issues that need to be addressed? The Quonset hut, that would just be a building permit, correct?
Correct. And then the one that's being relocated, I'm not sure. It, it's kind of a built structure, so it'll have to satisfy the building code if it's going to get rebuilt. So again, those will be conversations we'll have to have with the building official and submit some plans.
And just working off your notes, there's an area of outdoor storage boxes existing behind the rear of the building?
Yeah, so I had the same question. I wasn't sure if those storage containers would be going away once these new areas were being built. We typically don't have storage containers on our, too often on our industrial lots.
Right, so should we have an approval condition that states there should be no other?
Any additional than shown on the site plan. I think that's reasonable.
He would like to keep these containers here. That's why we're showing them on the site plan and that's why he bought an extra 50 feet of land in the, behind him so that he's not over the setbacks with those containers.
Okay, and those are part of the print?
Yes.
That's part of the, this drawing?
Yes.
But when they go out there for a final inspection or whatever, there should not be other additional storage containers on site without them being labeled on the print?
Agreed, yes.
Okay. Other than that, that's all. One other thing, the comments that Jeff said, I believe that should be labeled as an approval condition?
Yeah.
And the date?
I neglected to put that. So yeah, the comments of July 12th should be incorporated into the final plans.
Okay. And were all the town engineers' concerns addressed?
They've all been agreed to.
Okay.
And we will, they will be incorporated, yes.
That's all I have, Commissioners? Is there any other questions or comments? If not, we can take action on this. Commissioner Wagner?
So I move we approve application 23-13P GDS estimating site plan. Conditions one through 12 are standard conditions. Condition three, this application is subject to a bond in the amount of $3,000 to ensure compliance with the erosion and sediment control measures. And condition four, a landscape bond in the amount of $5,000 is required and must be submitted prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy if work is not completed. And then additional conditions, number 13, plans should not be labeled re-subdivision. I don't know, you want to add a word that it's just a property line revision? And then number 14, new deeds describing the two properties shall be filed on the land records. Number 15, EV charging stations shall be installed consistent with the current building code regulations. And number 16, no snow will be deposited in wetlands or in the drainage swales. And then there was another one that you were bringing up just now.
Engineering comments.
Engineering comments dated July 12th. July 12th shall be addressed.
And I have one correction. I didn't put the right bonds for the wetlands commission. It was 5,000 erosion sedimentation, 5,000 stormwater, and 5,000 wetlands mitigation. That's according to the approval letter.
So I'll accept that change.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second? Any questions, comments? We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, concerns? Just as far as the containers, we're going to rely on town staff to inspect and confirm that.
So the as-built should match the approved site plan related to containers?
Okay, yes. Okay. Questions, comments? Hearing none? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Appreciate your time.
Okay.
I had my cell phone on. You might want to mention that to other people.
You had, for what? Oh, you're absolutely right. If anyone does have a cell phone, if they could shut it off, turn to vibe, whatever, so it doesn't disrupt the meeting. Our next item on our agenda is item two, the CGS Connecticut General Statute 8-24 referral. Do we have somebody here to represent this issue item?
Good evening, esteemed commission members. My name is Vincent Stetson, Director of Public Works. I believe you might have a memo there that I drafted in relation to this 824 referral, abandonment of Collins Lane. Are you guys familiar with that?
We can get a memo. Nobody gave us some, we got the 8-24 referral. Yeah.
Vincent, could you repeat that, please? And I don't know if your microphone isn't close enough, but generally you have to be within three inches of it.
Got it. So I'm mistaken. There was a memo that was given to the town council. I assume that it was forwarded to you guys regarding the abandonment of Collins Lane. Collins Lane is a cut through between Sand Hill Road and Ellington. I'm sure most of you are familiar with it. It's a very historic road, one of the oldest roads in town. The Collins family kind of set foot there and spread out in the town from there. Essentially, what we're looking at here is abandoning about 1,200 feet of a very narrow roadway between Sand Hill and Collins Lane in an effort to promote business development of the, I believe, eight Collins Lane property piece with four elements. They need a zoning variance change, which Michelle can talk to a little bit more in depth about. But from the town's perspective, you know, Collins Lane at this point is really just a glorified driveway that we've been maintaining for decades. And it would be in the best interest of the town to abandon this to allow for economic development in the area and to reduce future liabilities to the town for maintenance, repair, and control of what is Collins Lane. We have talked with both the proposed business owner and the current landowners there, and they are both in agreement with this proposed abandonment. And if you guys have any further questions, please feel free.
Okay, thank you. I'll just turn to our town staff, our director of planning, Michelle Leip, see if you have a report.
Just to, to let you know why it's in front of you, under the, the 8-24 Connecticut General Statutes, whenever a town council proposes to abandon a road, it gets referred to the Planning and Zoning Commission for comment. So this is your opportunity to comment on whether or not you think it's a good idea, bad idea. How it works is you provide comment back to the town council. If it were not a favorable recommendation, they would have to proceed with a super majority. You have 35 days to comment. That's kind of why it was somewhat time sensitive to get on tonight's agenda. So as Vincent said, Collins Lane is, the map in front of you shows the extent of the right of way that is out there. So the piece that's in front of it kind of floats in space and it actually is attached to the piece that has the large house on it. So there is someone who is interested in buying the large house and would like to take advantage of our office conversion overlay zone and convert it into medical office building. One of the criteria under that regulation is that you have to have frontage on Sullivan Ave. That property does not have frontage on Sullivan Ave unless it can attach this floating piece in front of it to it. So that is what was the genesis of this whole discussion. I know Collins Lane from years in the past has always been somewhat of a question mark of, you know, should the town abandon it or not? I think there was some movement many, many years ago to do portions of abandonment of it. So it was, you know, kind of my recommendation to, if that's what the parties wanted, to pursue it with the town council. So they did go in front of the town council, and now it's in front of you for comment. So again, the anticipation would be that, you know, how abandonment works, once a town abandons its road, 50/50 to the abutting neighbors. So abutting neighbors would get half of it. And then whatever negotiations or whatever, the intent is for one of the properties to come in for an application, again, to turn it into medical office.
Okay. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Any, any questions, comments?
I mean, it's as far as liability and maintenance.
Okay.
Let's dissolve that and let it become the liability and the maintenance of the homeowners and the landowners.
Yes. So you're in favor of giving a favorable review?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that the consensus of?
I did a, I guess I didn't understand. I mean, first of all, I'm also in favor of this, but this property that's sort of a wedge between Collins and Sullivan, who owns that?
The large house. So I don't know if that's eight Collins or 10. I forget which one.
There's two Collins Lane, which is owned by a wonderful couple. I believe Sailor Taylor here is in the audience if she wanted to come up and speak to this and her supported it. But.
So they're on both sides of the road, is what you're saying? And then what's the deal?
The wedge of land would belong to the future business owner between what is now Collins Lane and Sullivan Ave.
I guess I didn't understand that. So there's this other property here that shows a four cars on the picture in a building. What's that?
This is the property, this is the property that's for sale. This is eight Collins Lane. And this is the residential property, two Collins Lane. This property here, the wedge, belongs to this parcel here.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner LeBlanc?
Yeah, just looking for, at the aerial here as well. Are there any easement or any utilities on the ground here? I mean, really, Sullivan Avenue was shifted over, you know, in the last 40 years, but is there anything under that pavement that's there that the town may have some recourse or?
Just the sewer connection.
Okay.
Okay. Y'all set?
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioners, anything else? Then are we all in agreement that we'll return a favorable review? Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Okay, with that being complete, I will call the public hearing for the planning and zoning for Tuesday, August 15, 2023, to order. Our first item on our agenda is application 23-25P, the Metro Realty Management Corporation. Before I call them up, I would just like to explain to the audience, if anyone would like to speak when I say it's time for public comment, please come up and you'll have three minutes to speak. Please sign in. Do we have a sign in sheet up there? Okay. And do the best you can to complete your thoughts in three minutes. If you have more to say than time allows, we will allow you to come back up after all other speakers have spoken.
Chairman, could the applicant have a minute to get set up? He does have to get a PowerPoint.
Yeah, by all means. Yep, okay. The secretary will read the public notice.
To be published in the Journal Inquirer Thursday, August 3, 2023, and Thursday, August 10, 2023, South Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission. Notice is hereby given that there will be a public hearing on Tuesday, August 15, at 7:45 PM in the council chambers of the South Windsor Town Hall to consider the following. Number one, application 23-25P, the Metro Realty Management Corporation, requests for a zone change of approximately 4.82 acres from Buckland Gateway Development Zone to the multifamily assisted housing, MAHZ. I think the word zoning should be in there, to include a portion of 240 Demond Street, 4.82 acres, and a portion of 440 Buckland Road, 0.36 acres, including conceptual plan in accordance with section 7.22.2.2A, continued from July 25, 2023. Copies of the application are on file in the office of the town clerk and/or planning department and online at www.southwindsortct.gov, planning department pages, planning and zoning commission applications. At this hearing, interested persons may be heard and written comments by the public will be received by mail or email. Persons who may require an accommodation can contact staff Monday to Friday, 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM, at 860-644-2511, extension 2329. Bart Passakonas, Chairman, Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay, thank you very much. Our order of business tonight will be, first, we'll hear from the applicant responding to previous comments that were made. Then we'll hear from town staff, then we'll hear from commissioners, and then we'll hear from the public if there's any additional public input. We do ask you not to repeat anything that you've already reiterated previously, so we can finish up on this application. So at this time, I'll turn it over to our applicant. Good evening. Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Passakonas, commission members, town staff, ladies and gentlemen. Attorney Tim Hollister, representing Metro Realty. Here tonight from Metro are Ben Tripp and Jeff Sager, our consulting engineer, Tom Daley from SLR Consulting, our traffic engineer, Mark Vertucci from Fossett O'Neill, and Kevin Zingler from M A R C in Manchester. As you know, and I think you just distributed, there were some supplemental materials that were e-filed several days ago. I would note for the record, I did provide a courtesy copy to Attorney Parks. And what I'd like to do is start with addressing the three petitions that were filed by Attorney Parks on behalf of his clients on July 25. Town Attorney Corella has provided opinions or memos on each of these three petitions, and in summary, we agree with his conclusions as to each one. And those conclusions are, number one, with regard to the so-called environmental intervention petitions, which are also known as General Statutes 22A19 petitions, where someone can intervene to raise the issue of impact of construction on natural resources. Our view and the town attorney's view is that that petition is simply not applicable here because this is only a zone change application at this time. The statute and case law are very clear that environmental intervention only becomes applicable when actual construction is proposed. Now, we don't think that's going to happen even when we get to construction, but the point is, at this juncture, no physical construction is proposed. It is just a zoning map, zoning, rezoning of the parcel that we're talking about. So that petition is, is not valid. Second petition, a so-called protest petition seeking to force this commission to conduct a super majority vote on the zone change. This is the one that involves the zoning map calculation. The owners of at least 20% of the land within 500 feet of the perimeter of the proposed rezoning must object. Our consulting engineer, SLR, prepared a survey map, which was provided to Ms. Leip and the town staff and Attorney Corella. And the short story is that the petition is several acres short of 20%, and we documented that, and Attorney Corella agreed with that. The third petition is, was to disqualify Commissioner Kavik-Narrow due to his membership in a statewide organization that advocates for housing. But Attorney Corella pointed out, and we agree, that disqualification is only for a personal or financial interest in the application, which was not claimed or alleged here, or for public statements showing that a commissioner has made up his or her mind about the application before the start of the public hearing. And there's no claim to that effect in this petition. So Attorney Corella concluded that there is no basis to disqualify Commissioner Kavik-Narrow. And again, we agree with those conclusions. So at this point, I will turn it over to Mr. Tripp.
Thank you, Tim. Good evening. For the record, Ben Tripp, on behalf of the applicant, the Metro Realty Management Corporation. So we're here tonight, we started our public hearing back July 11. As you know, continued to public comment on July 25. And so we're here this evening really, first and foremost, to attempt to address comments that we've received, both via letter from the public and also from this commission. And so first, I'd like to go through some of those, the way that we feel that we can address some of those comments, and then ultimately describe the way in which we've modified the plan, ultimately to reduce the, the scope of the development by 25%, which we hope demonstrates a real earnest effort to, to come to some sort of middle ground on this particular proposal. So the first topic I'd like to address is traffic. We did hear quite a bit about concerns about existing, existing traffic conditions. There was some scrutiny, I think, related to the, the veracity of the traffic report that was submitted by Mr. Vertucci of Fossett O'Neill. So first and foremost here, I'm not a traffic expert. And I am left to read the report and decipher the information, the same as any other non-expert. And Mr. Vertucci is here and will testify later in this hearing, but I just think, based on what seemed like a discrepancy between perhaps an understanding of the report and some of the public comment, you know, I think it helps to outline some just kind of basic facts pulled from the report. So first, I think it's important to note that this was actual data that was collected in June of 2023, just a couple of weeks before the first public hearing. It's that data that provides the background for all the analysis that was performed. To underscore this, I think there was, there was testimony from the public that suggested they, someone came down to Demming Street and counted vehicles for an hour on a busy weekend afternoon and came up with upwards of 300 vehicles that they counted. So if you, if you review the report itself, it does indicate that on Saturday at peak hour, there are 337 vehicles traveling westward toward Demming Street, or on Demming Street toward Buckland Road. So I don't think there's any disagreement over the, the level of the current traffic that exists on Demming Street. But the important conclusion of the report is that the roadway infrastructure and the signalized intersection are appropriately and safely managing the existing traffic condition. So, you know, that's, that's not just an opinion of our traffic expert. The, the report was also reviewed by town staff, by the town engineer, the police department, and there were no concerns registered with respect to safety, no concerns registered with respect to an impact of the proposed development on existing traffic conditions. So, so the, the upshot is it seems that there really is no traffic issue here. But I, I will say that I have to appreciate the public's perspective of traffic on Demming Street as Evergreen Walk and Buckland Road have continued to develop over time. If you live in that area, it's likely that you've experienced an increase of traffic on Demming Street. So, you know, putting aside the, the data that suggests that traffic is being managed appropriately here, if there's a perception that there's a traffic issue in this area, then this proposed development is a solution to that problem because it would lock in a lower intensity. a lower intensity use than the underlying zone, and a lower, one of the lowest traffic generating uses that you can put on this particular property. So Mr. Vertucci is here, he will again present, you know, impacts of our reduced development on the traffic report, but I just kind of want to provide that kind of broad picture of, of the traffic at this time. So another topic that we, that I think we heard quite a bit about was, was the potential impacts of the development on the public school system. So this is another concern that, you know, I can genuinely understand the community's perspective here. I think it is an honest concern with respect to enrollment trends that have taken place over the past, over the recent years in town. And I also heard some, some comment from, from the public and from the commission that it seems people would come in with projections as to how many children would be in their development, and then the development would be put in place, and the results are wildly different than what was projected. So, so I don't want to talk about projections, I just want to talk about actual data. So every year, the Board of Education uses a consultant to report to them the actual number of enrolled children from the new residential developments in town. And that's what this data is that you're looking at. So I think that really the important takeaway off the top here is that apartments, and this is a conclusion stated in, in the report, small format apartments, one and two-bedroom apartments, are the lowest generator of the new residential uses with respect to school age children. So, and intuitively, it makes sense. The, the single-family developments and even the condominium developments are at minimum two-bedroom, but mostly three and four-bedroom, sixteen, eighteen, hundred square feet, two thousand plus square feet, attached garages, that they're places where you envision a family with children residing. The, the smaller format rental apartments, such as the development that we own and operate at one seventy-five Oakland Road, you can see here, this was from September of twenty-twenty-two, where eleven children were reported from seventy-eight apartments. We revised these numbers recently with the Board of Education. They stated that it's, it ranges from eight to ten school age children. And so again, that's eight to ten children, seventy-eight apartments. You'll see our modified proposal is for fifty-five apartments. So I, I'm not gonna, I don't want to put projections in front of you to the extent that I think that the numbers with respect to this product type are illustrative. So another comment that we received was that the location is not walkable. So I believe that the location absolutely is walkable. I, you know, I can go through the fact that it's two minutes to the bus stop and ten minutes to the grocery store and eleven minutes to Evergreen Walk, and, you know, all those things are true. I mean, it's walkable, it's also bikeable. And I also think it's important to note that we're not just talking about individuals walking to the grocery store. This is a tremendous amount of, of service level employment in this corridor. Many of those individuals would qual, could potentially qualify for the housing that we're proposing here. So the ability for these individuals who provide services to the community to have, to have the opportunity to walk or bike to work, I think, is significant. But ultimately, I think that the walkability is really highlighted by the fact that the town itself, through a grant that it received from the state, invested over nine hundred thousand dollars to bring the sidewalk from the corner, from the corner of Demings and Buckland, on the west side of Buckland, all the way up to the center of town and pass to the town hall and the library. I don't think the town would have made this investment if it did not think that this sidewalk pedestrian network was, was useful. And so I think by, by placing a development with direct access to this network that the town, and leveraging the investment made by the town, proceeds toward the goal that the town has for new housing, affordable housing in pedestrian-friendly environments. So another comment we heard is just sort of generally the idea that this does not fit here. You know, it doesn't fit in the neighborhood, whether it's too dense, and I'll talk about density a little bit in a second, or it's just, it's not congruous with the surrounding uses. And as a result of that incongruity, the, it would have a negative impact on nearby home values. So we submitted several reports for the record regarding the fact that there's no impact of multifamily or affordable housing on nearby home values. But I, I think you could argue that these studies are location-specific often, and I think the most prudent thing to do here is to actually look at the proposed location. So first, I don't think it's fair to characterize a development as being dropped in the middle of a neighborhood. I think if you see, if you look at the, the property lines, you'll see that on three sides, it's surrounded by existing high-density multifamily residential uses, two nursing homes and a existing age-restricted multifamily development. And the only property line not bounded by those developments is a proposed conservation area of over an acre. But I also think just considering that the historical balance of the neighborhood with the other existing multifamily that exists in this neighborhood, both the, the Berry Patch development, but also not too far north, the one seventy-five Oakland Road, non-age-restricted mixed-income development. So the nuances here, of course, are that those developments don't access from, from Demings Street. Now, the act, the point of access, I think, is really, it's a traffic concern, it's not, I mean, we haven't received any notices of nuisance or noise or any sort of complaints of disruption from any of these communities historically. So the idea that this new proposed development does not fit when it is surrounded by similar uses, I, I just, it's, it's hard for me. I think we have to remember that these are people who are living in their homes, and they keep similar schedules and have similar habits to all of the individuals who live in the single-family homes down the street. So it, it is hard for me to, to kind of connect the dots on how this is so incompatible with the surrounding uses. All right. So I think this is a good time to go into the, the proposed modifications that we've made to the site plan. So as I had mentioned, we've reduced the, it's a conceptual site plan, I should, I should point out. We've reduced the number of proposed units from seventy-two to fifty-five. We've increased the front, I think there's some level of comfort in the dimensional requirements of the gateway zone, so we really focused on redesigning the development to adhere to all of the bulk and setback and height requirements of the gateway development zone, so that it's not, for example, we're adhering to the sixty-five-foot yard front setback, which is consistent across the gateway development zone, allowing for additional landscaping and screening in the front yard. We've also, by, by way of reducing the number of apartments, we've reduced the amount of parking, which has allowed us to make, really bring the buildings further toward the center and away from the property line, which has provided for the elimination of virtually all of the retaining walls that were previously contemplated with the site plan. We pulled the rear, the northernmost building, far from the northern property line, so the entirety of that existing northern vegetated buffer would remain between this proposed development and the assisted living facility to the north. We've reduced the number of buildings from seven to five. And we've listened to, to the comments about the general layout of the site. We removed, relocated dumpster locations to places that would not conflict with residence uses of the available open space in the interior of the site. Just to, to remind, you know, what these buildings are, they're two-story, individual entrances with no common hallway, presenting very similar to, I would say, you know, a condominium-style access and presentation. So I'm sure there will, or there, there may be more questions that come up on the, well, actually, before I move on, I would like to just highlight, after the reductions that we've made, we, so after the reductions that we've made, ultimately, the impervious coverage that is shown on this conceptual site plan is thirty percent. What's permitted in the gateway development zone is sixty percent, so it's roughly half the permitted impervious in the underlying zone. We're showing eleven percent building coverage, where twenty-five percent would be allowed in the MAHC if that zone were to be landed. And ultimately, as a result of these modifications, we would no longer have to put that one point one-four acre, single-family lot into conservation in order to conform with the MAHC bulk requirements. Now, we, I will just say, we are certainly willing to still do so. I think that, at the time of site plan, is a broader conversation with the commission and with the public as to what, what really is the, the best use of that. It will not be a part of the multifamily proposal, and, but, you know, whether it is more suited as a single-family residential use, or whether this commission and the town would, would prefer to see it put into conservation with some sort of, with some sort of planting plan, whether it's screening, or whether it's a wild, wildflower, you know, overseeding for, to help with pollinate, pollinators. I think, again, I just wanted to, to state that while we're certainly still willing to put that into conservation, it's, it's something that we would like to have a, a So there was, and it's kind of hard to see this, so hopefully you have it on your package handed out, even though this is more site plan-related detail than what's required in a conceptual plan, there was some commentary about grading on the site and whether there would be retaining walls, and so I did want to show that we have advanced the, the grading detail with the relocation of the, of the buildings. We were able to, previously, there was a retaining wall running essentially the entire eastern edge of the site and connecting to this northern building. By way of the reduction, we were able to shift these eastern, these western buildings to the east and eliminate that entire wall. So the only wall that we believe would, would be located on the site is a, a small run on the, the eastern property boundary adjacent to the Berry Patch. And, you know, that, that brings up, I know there was one question previously about screening and, and distances from Berry Patch. The closest building is just over a hundred feet from the closest point of that closest Berry Patch building. The majority of the existed, the existing vegetated buffer is still on the Berry Patch side of the property line, from what, even with this modified property line that we're showing, so that, you know, there'd be no grading activities over that property line and those, the majority of those trees would remain. So I think at this point, I'm going to ask Mr. Vertucci to come up and deliver some more of the, the traffic-related elements, and then I'll come back for some other points.
Thank you, Ben. Good evening. I'm Mark Vertucci, a senior transportation engineer at Fossett O'Neil. We're located at one forty-six Hartford Road in Manchester. I'm also a registered professional engineer in Connecticut and a registered professional traffic operations engineer. I did want to briefly, again, review with you the findings of our traffic study and also address some of the comments, as I do so, that were raised in the meeting, the last meeting, and also discuss our revised calculations for, for trip generation for the lower intensity development of fifty-five units. Again, orienting to the site, the driveway is going to be located approximately five hundred thirty feet east of the Buckland-Demings Street intersection, so out of the influence of the queues that occur at that traffic signal. The study did review two intersections, the Buckland Road at Demings Street intersection, as well as the proposed site driveway intersection with Demings Street. As Ben had mentioned, we conducted new traffic counts at the intersection in June, early June of this year, so we have very recent count data. This count data has captured all the recent development in the area, including the Costco traffic. We counted during three peak periods, the weekday morning, the weekday afternoon, and then also the Saturday midday peak period, which is when the retail is really generating in that area. Those peak hours were determined to be eight to nine A. M., four to five P. M. during the weekday, and on Saturday, eleven forty-five to twelve forty-five. So we analyzed those three peak periods for impacts. As far as growing the traffic, we expect that the development build year will be twenty-twenty-five. So we took our twenty-twenty-three counts, and we grew them by a one percent per year growth factor. This is just to account for normal traffic growth in the study area. That growth rate was provided to us by the Department of Transportation. We also added in traffic from other developments in the area, portions of unbuilt developments that were approved but have yet to be constructed. That includes traffic from Evergreen Walk, the hundred sixty-five residential units in the Whole Foods, also phase two of the gateway development, where there'll be some more retail and medical office that has yet to go in. So all that traffic was added to our counts to develop a twenty-twenty-five baseline condition to work off of. From there, we generated the traffic for the proposed development, and we did that by utilizing trip generation rates provided in the Institute of Transportation Engineers' Trip Generation Manual. This is an industry-accepted resource for determining traffic generation for various land uses. As I indicated last time, this residential development is a very low traffic generator. For the initially proposed seventy-two units, we had projected up to twenty-eight trips in the peak hours. Now that we're down to fifty-five units, we're projecting twenty trips in the morning peak hour of traffic, and twenty-one trips in the weekday afternoon and Saturday midday peak hours of traffic. So it's a decrease of about five to seven trips during the, the peak periods. I wanted to hit on the, the distribution of where this traffic is going. The vast majority is going to go to Buckland Street, Buckland Road. This is the, the main thoroughfare through here, we're a commercial corridor, it leads to I eighty-four, has obviously many commercial uses along it. Study projects eighty-five percent of the traffic will go to Buckland Road, and fifteen percent will head east on Demings. So just to put that in perspective, fifteen percent of twenty trips, that's three trips in the peak hour we're adding to Demings Street. So that's one car every twenty minutes. So that is not a noticeable increase in traffic. And in the other direction, to the Buckland-Demings intersection, we're adding about seventeen to eighteen trips in the peak hours. This, we're adding this number of trips to an intersection that has twenty-five hundred cars in the weekday afternoon peak hour. That equates to a seven-tenths of a percent increase in traffic. So again, we're talking about negligible increases in traffic when you compare the background baseline condition to the build condition where this, should this development go in. Also wanted to hit on the fact, again, that this is a zone change before you. The existing Buckland Gateway Development Zone permits numerous high-intensity uses that generate large amounts of traffic, such as grocery stores, specialty food stores, medical office, high-turnover restaurants, coffee shops. These uses all generate substantially more traffic than a residential development, in some cases, ten to twenty times the amount of traffic. So this proposed zone change to multifamily assisted housing would lock in, guarantee that a low-generating residential traffic use goes on to this property. I did want to hit on our capacity analysis results, to determine the impact of the development traffic. We took those twenty-twenty-five baseline volumes, we added the site-generated traffic volumes to obtain the twenty-twenty-five build condition traffic volumes. We then ran an intersection analysis to compare those baseline versus build volumes. The Buck- Uh, the Buckland at Demming Street intersection is operating at acceptable levels of service today. Level of service B in the morning peak hour, uh, level of service C in the afternoon peak hour, and level of service C in the Saturday midday peak period. There will be no decrease in level of service as a result of the traffic from this development. Uh, also, the site driveway, the turn movements in and out are projected to operate at efficient levels of service A and B. Uh, I want to point out, all these analysis results I'm describing are conservative because they were done for the 72 units. Now that we've reduced to 55, um, the already negligible impacts would be, uh, even less than that. Uh, from a safety perspective, uh, we did review sightlines at the driveway, uh, proposed driveway location. Uh, we measured sightlines looking both the east and west direction. The sightlines exceed DOT criteria for safe egress. Uh, there were some comments on the crash analysis that we, uh, prepared at the last meeting. Uh, to reiterate, we reviewed the latest three years of crash history for our study area, uh, from the Yukon Crash Repository. There were no abnormal crash patterns or frequencies, uh, reported in the study area. Uh, specifically at the Buckland, uh, and Demming Street intersection, there was an average of six crashes per year. Uh, this is not an abnormal crash rate, given the volume of cars at that intersection. Uh, the majority of the collisions there were rear-end. This is typical for signalized intersections. And there were no crashes at all reported on Demming Street in the vicinity of the, uh, site driveway location. Uh, so, again, to, uh, conclude the findings of our traffic study, the proposed residential land use, it's a very low traffic generator. Uh, the proposed zone change before you would lock in a lower-generating residential land use, uh, versus the existing Buckland Gateway Zone, which would permit higher-generating, traffic-generating land uses. The proposed 55-unit development would generate approximately 20 to 21 trips in the peak periods. The addition of these trips will have no adverse impact to the safety and efficiency of traffic operations in the study area. And I want to point out again, Ben Tripp did mention it, uh, but the town staff has reviewed and concurred with the findings of the study. Uh, the police department had no comments, and, uh, the town engineer, in an email today, stated, uh, that "I concur with the findings of the traffic report done for the proposed development, and I do not think the proposed zone change in development at 240 Demming Street will have any noticeable impact on the town's infrastructure on Demming Street or Buckland Road." Uh, with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Ben, who is going to wrap up our presentation, then we can take, take, happy to take questions after that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, so just a few final comments that I wanted to make sure I address, um, before we broke for, for, um, staff and commissioner questions and comments. There was a question about whether there would be onsite management, onsite leasing office. Yes, there will be. There will also be onsite office for staff of Mark Inc. of Manchester. Um, they would be there daily, providing daily support or daily day programs to, uh, the individuals with int- intellectual disabilities that we are providing supportive housing for here. Um, they'll also, uh, have an individual there overnight on third shift, 365 days a year. There is a question about, uh, the pump station and any s- maintenance or noise potential issues with the pump station. I wanted to clarify, uh, it's a sanitary-only, uh, pump station, has nothing to do with, um, storm sewer, and it's a subterranean device, so there's no, uh, there's no concerns about noise generation to be located, uh, generally toward the middle of the site. So I, there's no concern about any exterior noise pollution as a result of that piece of equipment. Uh, there were some comments about, you know, can we guarantee that, um, supportive housing would be included in this development? The short answer is yes. Uh, we, as, because this is a zone change, you, you can't condition a zone change, um, you, you can't layer conditions on it, a zone change, so it's, it'd be more appropriate, uh, at a special exception in site plan level, but we would be more than willing to submit to any sort of condition that required. Um, I mean, I've been working with Kevin for almost a year on this development. I'm very committed and frankly wouldn't be moving forward here if it weren't for him. And, and the, you know, his group and the individuals that they support. And then there's, I would say, a general, and I think appropriate, hesitancy around zone changes. Um, you know, zone changes are, uh, important and should be carefully considered, and there are specific review criteria, which I, I think and I hope throughout our presentation, we've addressed those criteria. And if, if the commission feels that I have not, I'd be very, you know, willing to answer any questions with respect to those criteria. But I think, and just to, to conclude, I mean, I really believe that this is important. I think it's important for this community, for all of our communities, um, to, uh, create more hu- housing opportunities, specifically, uh, affordable housing opportunities. Uh, it's in the Plan of Conservation Development, it's in the Affordable Housing Plan that this commission adopted. This location is specifically highlighted as potentially suitable for, uh, this sort of development. It is pedestrian-friendly, it has access to public water, public sewer. It is really the definition of smart development in the context of where you locate higher-density residential uses. And I think, again, also from a practical standpoint, affordable housing is important to the town with respect to, um, calculations in the, in the context of A-30G. I think recently, information was provided by staff that, as a result of the new census, um, the percentage of 10% has, has moved backwards. Uh, this development, I, I think inclusionary developments where 10 and 12 and 15% of housing is required at 80%, that will keep you from moving backwards, but that will not meaningfully progress you toward the 10% that is prescribed in A-30G. And it's developments like this where you get the credit for the entire development, um, that will meaning, meaningfully move that needle. And additionally, with respect to the, the four-year moratorium, um, I think staff provided information as to points generated by other recent approvals. I will say that the projected points here, based on, unfortunately, it's a reduced unit count, but it's, it's 90 points, which is more than the, the combined additional points off of all the developments that were recently, um, counted in, in staff's, um, information that was distributed. But I think more than just that sort of practical standpoint, you know, the need is real. Just in the 175 Oakland, um, non-age restricted development that's just north of, of this proposed development, we currently, as of yesterday, have 129 individuals on the waitlist, and there are only 16 affordable apartments there. And they are consistently occupied and almost never available. If you combine Berry Patch and 175 Oakland and not even venture out to the other developments in town, we have 399 individuals on the waitlist right now. So, you know, that's, that's really my conclusion. It's that I, I, I believe that this is an appropriate location, um, to address a real need. So with that, I'll turn it over to, to Ben.
Okay, at this time, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll turn to our town staff, our director planning, Michelle Light.
Thank you, and I just have a couple of comments. Um, I did, at the request of Commissioner Wagner, I did provide you with some affordable housing information, looking at the most current data that we do have, um, and I did provide it in a memo, but just kind of summarize, um, you know, with our new census count, which is the 2020 census count, we're going to be going, assuming nothing else changes, we're going to be going from a 6.47% of affordable down to a 6.1%. And that's simply because of the number of new units we've added over the last 10 years, you know, balanced by the number of affordable units. So, um, you know, that's, that's not really getting us in the right direction. I also did provide for the commission how many units would be needed, which is 663, um, to get up to the needed 10%. And those would be, you know, individual units. I did provide a breakdown of the Sullivan Ave Plaza. If it were to go into construction based on what was approved, what kind of point structure you would be looking at for that, as well as the Evergreen Walk. So again, this is just informational, um, related to our existing situation, related to the affordable housing. And then the other document that was attached was just the state's appeal list that comes out every February. Um, the data of February 2023 is dated 2022. That's the most current data they're using. But again, come next year, the new census data will get incorporated and our numbers will drop a little bit, if nothing else changes. So, uh, just that information. And then secondly, I did want to just, um, the town engineer did give me a couple of comments, and I'd like to read them into the record. First and foremost, he did, uh, state that he did concur with the findings of the traffic report done on the proposed development, as indicated by, um, the traffic engineer. He doesn't think that the development at 240 Demming will have any noticeable impact on the town's infrastructure, Demming Street or Buckland Road. Um, he did, however, review all the record and comments from the public, and there's some things that he just wanted me to put on the record for both the commission's sake and the public, just about Demming Street in general and some of the infrastructure that's occurred out there over the last years and potential future. So, he says, "In 2009, Demming Street was reconstructed between Buckland Road and Grandview Terrace. This included improving drainage, reducing the steep slope in the section of the road, new base and pavement to provide a road width of at least 26 feet. The proposed development at 240 Demming Street is within that area. In 2018-19, new sidewalks were, um, completed on the west side of Buckland Road from Demming Street past the driveways to the town shopping area to the intersection of Buckland Road, Ellington Road, Sullivan Ave, Oakland Road, and Town Hall and Library. Traffic signals in this area were upgraded with pedestrian buttons and signals. This is a Connecticut DOT, LoSIP grant-funded project that cost over $900,000 and provided safe sidewalks for residents to use along the Buckland Road corridor. In 2019, new drainage was installed on Demming Street from Ridge Road to Grandview Terrace, and the road was repaved. This was done as part of Ridge Road improvements. Demming Street was not widened at a time because of the extra costs and impacts to utilities and abutting properties. There is a sidewalk gap on Demming Street between Grandview Terrace and Cardinal Way, slightly over 1,500 feet. Sidewalks could be built here if approved by the town council and any needed easements from abutting property and utility relocations. Residents who want sidewalks here should write to the town council, CCing the engineering department, and request sidewalks be considered for this section of Demming Street. By town ordinance, the town council would hold a public hearing to receive public input on the proposed sidewalk and view a concept plan and cost estimates prepared by the engineering department, decide whether or not to proceed with sidewalks there. And then lastly, the town has a traffic calming policy, and residents could request a tra- traffic calming study be done for Demming Street between Oakland and Buckland Road. Traffic calming policy can be found on the town website under the engineering department. Um, again, these are Jeff Doolittle, town engineering comments dated, uh, today, August 15th, 2023. And that is, uh, it for staff comments. I would also just point out that we did receive three legal opinions as requested by the commission for the petitions that were received at the last meeting. The commission members all received copies of those. I think Commissioner Wagner was going to address those at this point. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Wagner?
Yep. Um, I think like everybody on the, on the board, we've read the legal opinions that were given to us by the town attorney. Uh, so I have two motions. Uh, regarding the petition for intervenor status under General Statute 22A-19, a motion to deny the three petitioner requests for Glover, Fo, Palascloni for intervenor status. This denial is based on the town attorney's legal opinion of August 2023, which, in which he states the petitioners lack standing.
Okay, uh, we have a motion. Do we have a second? I'll, I'll second it, um, for discussion. So, we have motion, a second, uh, discussion, commissioners? Uh, our, the opinion, um, and town staff's review, um, shows that they did fall short in the numbers.
At this point, we're talking about the intervenor petitions, correct?
Oh, okay, my apologies.
The issue, I think the issue with this one is that, uh, it's the wrong time in the process. Uh, this type of intervention can come, uh, when there's an actual site plan in front of us. This is a zone change. And so, as I interpret this letter from the town attorney, uh, this isn't the right time to, uh, put this type of petition for intervenor status, uh, in. It requires that there be an actual action to petition, to petition against, uh, an action such as an actual site plan, as opposed to a zone change.
So, um, is there any other discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to deny intervenor status, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion unanimous.
The next motion is a petition, a petition against a zone change at 240 Demming Street and 440 Buckland Road. A motion to deny the protest petition submitted under CGS 8-3B, requiring two-thirds supermajority vote for approval of the zone change. This denial is based on the town attorney's legal opinion of August 10th, 2023, in which he states the petition does not satisfy the requirements of CGS 8-3, which would require a two-thirds supermajority to approve the proposed zone change.
Okay, um, so we have a, a motion. Uh, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have motion as second. Any discussion, questions, comments, commissioners?
Again, in the, in the attorney's letter, um, basically did the arithmetic on what it takes to, uh, qualify for this, uh, type of petition, and they didn't, uh, meet the, the numbers of signatures with people in the right area.
Okay, uh, any other questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of denying this petition, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, uh, Steve, uh, do you want to read the third opinion regarding Commissioner Cavignaro? Do you have a third? Okay.
So this is, um...
Your microphone's off.
This is a letter from, uh, Richard D. Corella, the town attorney, regarding allegations of bias of a commission member. Um, at a prior meeting of the town, a South Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission, 23 persons, petitioners submitted a signed petition requesting that a member of the commission, Alan Cavignaro, uh, recuse himself from deliberating on the application for a zone change proposed by the Metro Realty Management Corporation, the applicant. Uh, the basis for the petition is that Cavignaro has a major role for a group that lobbies for affordable housing. Petitioners believe that this commissioner will be unable to be impartial regarding the applicant's proposed zoning change. With, uh, and the brief answer is, without additional allegations of personal interest or predetermination, there's no basis for Cavignaro's disqualification. Uh, if additional facts arise, this can be reassessed.
Okay, so, um, there's nothing to act on, on this, uh, so absent additional facts, as Steve said, there's no evidence, um, disqualifying, uh, the individual, so, um, that is moot. Okay, so, um, I've got so many papers out here now. At this time, um, Steve, we have a couple letters. Michelle?
We're going to do commission questions first and then get to the public comment.
Pardon me?
Questioners first.
Okay, yes. Uh, so, I'll turn to commissioners. Uh, our last public hearing, uh, the commissioners' comments were just brief, uh, in nature. Uh, so I'm going to ask if any commissioners have any additional, uh, questions, comments. Commissioner Quarishy?
I was looking at the, uh, public school enrollment...
Maybe just move your microphone a little closer.
Public school enrollment numbers, um, and I'm, I'm trying to understand the multiplier that's used there. Is that provided by? Where does that multiplier come from? Is that the Board of Ed?
So, the multiplier, you're referring probably to the page in the...
Bennett, Bennett, if you could pull your microphone down a little bit more, too.
Better?
Yeah.
Okay, so, the multiplier, the reason this was included, uh, in the supplemental materials is that when we had proposed 175 Oakland Road back in 2017, we had provided a projection of school age children based both on, let me pull this up so everyone can see what we're looking at. Let me pull this up so everyone can see what we're looking at. A projection of school-aged children based on both our experience with our portfolio of multifamily, as well as what's known as the Rutgers multiplier, which is a study that's commonly used to project the number of school-aged children in new residential developments, and it's based on unit type, level of affordability. And so, by way of both analyzing our existing housing stock, as well as applying this, you know, there are two separate analyses we did, and they both arrived at around or just over eight school-aged children for the entire development. And as I reported most recently, the information that we got now, six years later, is that it is between eight and 10. So, just kind of a verification that that mode of analysis works. And so, subsequently, I applied the same multiplier. Here, we have a higher level of affordability proposed, so in 55 units, we, just simply based on the Rutgers multiplier, would project 14 school-aged children in development.
Okay, was there any attempt...
And I guess, I'm sorry, the only qualifier is that I, we aren't, in any of these numbers, we're not taking into consideration the fact that 25% of the apartments would be reserved for individuals with intellectual disabilities.
Was there any attempt made at comparing these to South Windsor's school enrollment in these apartments? Because you're using a multiplier, and I'm trying to figure out if that's taking into account the fact that we do have higher enrollment in some of these apartment units that come off.
Yeah, so, we, realistically, we, the intention here was to contrast the incidence of school-aged children in the single-family and for ownership condominium and the larger... I mean, it was, I think, demonstrated pretty clearly through the information provided to the Board of Education, that the enrollment in these one- and two-bedroom smaller multifamily is consistent with what you'd expect from a rental multifamily development, and not, you know, the more than one school-aged children per unit is only seen in the single-family setting.
Because what I was hoping for was more of a range, because it usually is, should be a range, right? If you're saying 13, is it 13 and 25, 13 and 50? Because if you look at South Windsor's enrollment, I think that should give you some projections as well, unless you took that into account, which I don't see in the... I'm trying to figure out the multiplier, which you said is based on Rutgers and something else.
Yeah, it's a...
But not...
Yes, so, the Rutgers is a national study, and you're right, it's not South Windsor-specific, of course.
Right.
So, I think what we had aimed to do was use the Rutgers study, which is, again, pretty widely used, but also rely on data that we see from existing developments in South Windsor, which is what is shown here, to substantiate that, in the smaller format rental apartments, that there is not that elevated level of school enrollment.
So, if I just look at one, Clark states, help me understand this, if it says occupied units 18, and total enrollment K through 12 is 21?
Correct, and so, those are, that's a single-family development. And so, that is generating, what is it, just over one school-aged child per unit, 1.17 per unit.
And then, if I look at an apartment complex, 78 is 11. That's as of October 2022.
Correct, and so, that is, you know, 10, roughly 10 times fewer children per unit, 0.14 school-aged children per apartment.
And you couldn't go more recent, maybe June 2020?
This specific report is provided to the Board of Education every, at the end of every year, and so, we reached out for supplemental information on our development.
And for the record, that's my handwriting to the right. I did contact the school prior to the start of this application, and was told that they have between eight to 10 students currently enrolled out of 175 Oakland Road. So, that is...
Okay, thank you. Okay, Commissioner Carey?
So, I think you did a really nice job trying to address all the concerns. I do have a question. In that lot, that's like, you know, that residential lot? Had you given thought to try into making that wooded?
We would be open to any form of landscaping plan that would be, you know, of interest to the town, to this commission. So, that, I think, is more ultimately site plan level detail if we are fortunate to be, you know, approved here, but the benefit is that ultimately, it's a special exception in site plan, and you will continue to have considerable discretion over the ultimate layout, landscaping of the ultimate site. But again, we're open to putting it into conservation, we're open to a robust landscaping plan, and then putting it into conservation. So, that, those are certainly conditions of approval that we would be more than willing to consider when we get, if we're fortunate to get to the site plan level.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Blank?
How many questions at this time? Thank you.
Commissioner Wagner?
Okay, thank you. I thought I heard you making a comment that we aren't going to be rezoning the entire two properties that we started with in the initial application. So, just so we're clear, do we have one of the maps that shows exactly what's getting rezoned and what's being left as a double A30 on one of these maps?
It's not in this, it's definitely in a package that you have.
If you show the map that shows your picture there.
Oh, yeah.
So, it's outlined in the development, right? See, the dash line is what's proposed Buckland Gateway Zone, right?
And then, you can see, maybe the next map is a little clearer. So...
Give me a second to find that on my own.
Sure.
Okay.
Make up a big...
Yeah, so, you can...
So, there's a dotted line on this?
I think the next map would be clearer.
Okay.
Just because it doesn't have the conflict with the color, so...
So, the next map?
It's on a previous colored version where the red, the yellow, and the blue?
Yep.
Okay. Right, but that...
This is now changed, yes.
Well, there's a dotted line.
Yeah, that's more of a...
All right, so, I just wanted to make sure we understand what we're zoning and what we're not zoning. Sorry about that.
Correct.
So, you made a comment that the intellectual disabilities occupants are less likely to bring children with them, so your one estimate come up with something like 14 students, and I recognize that's a range. But actually, we're looking more like 10 or 11 would be a more realistic...
Yeah, and I intentionally didn't include them in the calculation to be conservative, but we received testimony from Kevin Zingler, the president and CEO of Mark Inc. Manchester, that those individuals would not have school-aged children.
So, I do have some thoughts. You might as well have a seat. I read all the letters, and there were a lot of them, and I appreciate that input from the public. So, there were some concerns that are expressed from the residents. I'd like to give you my thinking. One is the issue of traffic on Demming Street. I think there's a real traffic issue there, at least it's a busier street than we would like it to be. But I did study the traffic report, including all the little diagrams of who's turning left and who's turning right. And I think that, I agree with the applicant, that the proposed use would have actually a minor contribution to this situation. I agree that other allowed uses, like a retail or an office, would generate a lot more traffic. So, and they've reduced the size of the project from 72 to, was it 55? So, I think all of these things lead me to conclude that it's not really going to be an issue with this project. I do think the town should look into traffic calming measures, and I think the town engineer made a suggestion that residents approach the town council. I mean, you could put a roundabout somewhere on that street or other things to make it less desirable to take that shortcut. So, anyway, that's my, excuse me, that's my input on that. I am concerned, I got, picked up a number of comments, both in the public comments and in the letters, that people are concerned about bringing in what I would call less desirable residents into the community. You know, the idea that low-income people don't belong in that neighborhood, that it'll bring crime, that it'll turn us into Manchester or East Hartford, you know, agreeing that we need affordable housing, but not here, that the students will somehow not be up to the standard of other South Windsor students. We're going to bring in higher-needs students, and that's going to divert school resources. I have to oppose this line of thinking in the strongest possible terms. It's the kind of class bias that has led to the affordable housing crisis pretty much throughout the country, but also here in Connecticut. The applicant provided two studies, and they're very consistent with my own reading over the years, that applicants and affordable housing do not actually drive down property values in neighborhoods. It's very understandable, the fear that people have, but when actual projects are built and studied, those fears have not been borne out. So, I would just say, it's easy to stoke the fears, but there's really not a lot of evidence that your property values are going to be hurt by building this, building this I would point out that we have an affordable housing plan that was approved in April of 2022. This commission voted unanimously to approve that plan, which we worked on for several months before we issued that. Now, the current members, Commissioner Vettary and Commissioner Cavignaro, were not on the board at the time, but I have a reason to believe they would have voted for that, too. So, we are in the process of trying to implement that affordable housing plan, and the plan was mandated by the state, but it's also a good plan. And I find this application completely consistent with the affordable housing plan. There's also the state policy. I appreciate Counselor Kozakowski's concern that once our town exemption expires in 2024, a project like this could be built without any oversight from zoning. So, I think we're wise to go ahead with a project like this. There's also a real need. There's a regional shortage of housing that projects like this can help. We all know seniors who are unable to find affordable alternatives at the houses they would like to move out of. You know, they want to move out of their big house that's very expensive to maintain, much bigger than what they need, and they're not able to find a place to live. You heard about the 300 waiting list for these developments in town. There's a real need for this type of development, just to accommodate our own residents. I think there's a comment in several of the letters that inclusion is a right, that everybody has a right to be included, and that includes being able to find a place to live. From the perspective of the people who would actually live here, I think it's an ideal location. They're within walking distance of the Sopin Shop, Evergreen Walk, medical offices, there's just many things, and bus, bus transportation into the city if they should need that. And our need for supportive housing, which is a large component of this project, is also very intense. I think we may all know families who have a child who's now an adult, and they're worried about how that adult child is going to be taken care of when they're not around to take care of that person. So, I think this meets a need in that area that's really important. There are similar projects in Farmington and Avon, according to the applicant, and I have to believe them. This house, this project is actually surrounded by multifamily housing of one type or another, with one access route, I suppose, to single-family housing. And then, even the idea that our students would be somehow hurt by students who come in from this affordable housing type of complex. They actually benefit from studying, playing with students of all social and economic backgrounds. And I can tell you, my own children, who are now in their 50s, benefited from that type of exposure in the town we lived in at the time. So, in my opinion, the benefits of the project far outweigh the concerns.
Thank you. Commissioner Foley?
A quick question. I forgot your gentleman's name for the traffic study. How, I'm curious, the July 25th study that was given to us compared to today's study, how the trips declined for each? What was that?
Right. Less units?
Yeah. Because of the reduction from the 72 to the 55?
Correct. With the 72 units, again, Mark Vertucci from Fosse &amp; O'Neil, with the 72 units, we had between 25 and 28 trips in the peak periods, with the 55 units, that decreases to between 20 and 21 trips. So, we reduce by five to seven trips in the peak hours.
And with that, none of that would have been, I guess this is for Ben, none of those are the Mark occupants, correct, as far as the reduction?
Yes, it is.
Yes, again, and maybe Mark can concur with this, but the study doesn't contemplate any of the Mark residents. The study is just purely the number of apartments and the expected trips generated by the number of apartments. So, it's, again, a more conservative way of looking at what is likely to be the ultimate traffic generation, because there are 25% of the apartments that would not be occupied by individuals with vehicles. So, to simply answer your question, the 20 and 21 trips assumes that there is no Mark population there. It's just strictly looking at a normal apartment and what the sort of traffic it would generate. So, that the true traffic generation, I would say, would be likely to be less than that.
Okay, I guess then, my next question would be, the number, the reduction of the units in total, was there a reduction in the Mark units?
No, no. So, the reduction in, there is, I would say, maybe we'd be required to lose a single, hopefully just a single Mark unit.
I didn't hear you.
Sorry. So, there's a limitation by the Department of Developmental Services that you can't have more than 25% of the apartments reserved for supportive housing. The goal is to really create an inclusive environment. They don't want this to just evolve into another group home that's, is the majority of the individuals, this supportive housing type of unit. So, as a result of the reduction, we, I think, will lose hopefully just one Mark apartment, but it's going to boil down to that 25% of the total unit count. I think at 72, we could potentially have been rounded up to maybe 17, and now, I'm hoping we can have 15, but it's going to be in a discussion with the Department of Developmental Services as to how many they will allow us to have in the development.
Okay, Commissioner Vettary?
Okay, Ben, well, you're up. I realize this is, this whole hearing is for a zoning change. It's not for the specific project itself, although you're showing what project could go there. I mean, that's going to be a whole different conversation. But one of the comments that was passed at our last meeting from several people was that the way it's set up with sidewalks, this unit wouldn't have access to the bus stops and to Buckland. Unless I'm missing my guess, that's not true, correct?
That's not true. It's part, it's directly located on an existing sidewalk, which is directly connected by other existing sidewalk or crosswalk to the entire sidewalk network up and down.
In fact, you would just go straight to the sidewalk to Buckland, and there's a bus stop...
Correct.
Right there, and if you cross, then you've got, okay, so, I did, I did understand right the first time. Quick question to you, Michelle. It said, I just noticed tonight, they're saying that you would get the 90.7 equivalent housing points toward the moratorium. Okay, not so much, because I think, I did some quick math over here, I think we would raise ourselves from 6.4% affordable to 6.89% or something like that, so we don't quite get to 10. You know, if we had 12 of these projects, we would get to 9%. With the moratorium, adding 90 points... With the moratorium adding 90 points, if this were to be built in time for the, the next moratorium, would this make a difference?
No, it won't. You'd still be short points. I think that the last moratorium was 204 points that I had to receive. I think it'd be something like 213 or 217. I don't quite have the exact number, but again, this would only be 90, so, yeah.
So, this would add 90, and then whatever the.
Yeah, but as you can see, you don't get many points for something like a, a housing project where you don't have any of the units that are supporting the affordability. So, our Evergreen Walk apartments, for example, it's a much lower point number, but it's a unit count number, so you're working on two different, you know, two different variables there.
Okay.
Little comp.
Okay, I agree with several of the other comments that were made, but I have nothing new to contribute beyond that.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Kavik-Narrow.
Thank you. I do have a list of questions I, I do want to go through. So, hearing the public hearing, or the individuals from the public hearing over the past couple of meetings, there were some concerns brought up. I'd like to echo some of their concerns into questions, and at least have it on the record that those concerns were answered. So, one of the concerns I did hear was about maintenance of current properties in South Windsor that you guys own, like Watson Farms, 175 Oakland. I, I assume you've answered it in some capacity, so I'm going to ask, really, I'm curious, who is responsible for, for maintaining those properties in South Windsor, and if so, how often are they maintained?
We are responsible for maintaining them.
No, the individual, not, not the company. So, if there's like a title or someone that works with Metro Realty that is responsible, or if there's more than one person, I, I'm just curious in the logistics of it.
Sure, we have a, we have a maintenance organization that employs, what, 30-plus individuals that, that maintain, you know, our portfolio of, of properties there, specifically for the South Windsor group. We've, you know, I, I don't have a, a name of a person, the direct, the director of maintenance is, you know, I can provide contact information, but ultimately, it is us as an organization who are responsible for the, the maintenance of that property, and they are maintained daily.
Okay. How often do they maintain the property, if they receive any complaints, for example?
Oh, daily.
Daily?
Yes.
Okay, just making sure on that. So, off-maintenance now, heard stuff about rent increases as well. So, I'm curious, from your opinion, what have been the main causes or reasons for, for rent increases, again, at Watson Farms, 175 Oakland, all the properties you manage in this town?
So, rent increases are a direct result of the increased cost of owning, operating, maintaining, development. And rent, rent increases are, of course, in this level of affordable housing are tightly controlled and prescribed by the Department of Housing. So, any proposed rent increase would have to be applied for and specifically approved by the individuals who provide the financing for, for the developments.
Okay, thank you. Let me get a little bit closer. Do have a few more questions. I think someone mentioned safety or security or something like that in the past. I'm really curious, and I've asked this question before, you know, we're in the modern age, 21st century, I'm curious if you guys will at least have security cameras here, or is that a plan, or no, or is that something that you guys would be willing to consider?
It's something we'd be willing to consider.
Okay. Okay. Next question I have, so, knowing the 9% low-income housing tax credit, from my knowledge, that is a part of Section 42. Part of Section 42 as well is the 4% low-income housing tax credit. I mention this because I know in your affordable, affordability memo, that all of this, the affordability, is dependent on if you get the funding, or the tax credit, I should say. So, hypothetically, if you guys don't get the 9%, are you guys going to apply for the 4% low-income housing tax credit? If yes or no, how will that impact the project? And I guess if you don't get either, what would that mean for the project, I guess, affordability-wise?
So, we are very familiar with the 4% program as well. We currently have a, a development under construction nearing completion in Berlin, Connecticut, that utilizes the 4% low-income housing tax credit. So, it's certainly a viable alternative path in the event that the, the 9% credit is, is not successful. And I'll reiterate some of the comments from the, the first presentation at this site. Part of the reason we feel so incredibly strong about this site is that it sets up more competitively for the 9% credit than any other location that I've studied in terms of pursuing, you know, an affordable housing location, based on, you know, many of the items that we described with pedestrian access and public transportation, et cetera. So, but between the 9% and the 4% credit, it, it wouldn't inherently change the way that the affordability is, is delineated, or, you know, often you see 4% developments that are 100% affordable, as opposed to a 9% development, which requires a level of mixed income, which is 20% market rate. So, to, to fully answer that question is, is a little hypothetical, but, you know, the upshot is that, again, we're familiar with the 4% credit, and it's a viable alternative strategy.
Okay, thank you. And I guess a follow-up to that is, if you can't achieve either, I assume then you're going to try and get between the 10, 15, 20% range. Is that something that's going to be achievable for you guys?
Well, in this zone, it requires to be classified as assisted housing, so we would not be in conformance with zoning if we were approved, and then we did not receive some sort of subsidy, some sort of government-assisted financing for the affordable units. So, we couldn't just say, okay, we're doing 10% at 80%, it wouldn't, it wouldn't, we wouldn't be in conformance.
Okay. I, I just ask because I know there's a case that, for example, if you can't achieve it, then the project may fall through. That's why I ask, have it on the record. One last part to that question, does shrinking to 55 units, I guess, hurt your chance at all for the 9% low-income housing tax credit?
No, we really studied the reduction carefully to ensure that the, the project was still feasible. I would not propose a, you know, modification of the plan that was not feasible.
Okay. Very last question. So, I, I know in the past, you talked about, I think, a right-turn lane on Demming, or at least adding a right-turn lane separately from Demming to, I think it's Buckland there. Is that correct? We've had discussions on that in the past, part of the public hearing? That's for Michelle.
Yeah, I hope that's from Michelle again.
That was a recommendation that the town engineer gave to the applicant that they explored and chose not to move forward with it, so. So, that is not a recommendation of the applicant, so.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify, I wasn't, want to make sure it wasn't something else. Those are all my comments and questions. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Bernstein.
Ben, did I understand that there's a waiting list of over 300 between Berry Patch and 175 Oakland?
Yes.
That's remarkable, so we're clearly at capacity on those. Michelle, just one or two questions. On your document, the Affordable Housing Appeals List, a bunch of the municipalities are exempt. Is that because they've already achieved the?
10%.
Okay. Because I was noting, I was looking at this to see where we stand with respect to towns that we would consider competitive, and like Glastonbury and Ellington, we're doing better then, but not so much with East Hartford and, uh, East Windsor. Okay, that's, that's all I have. Thanks.
Okay. Ben, before we start reading letters and have the public speak out, I just did want to address, or ask you to address, or if Jeff would like to address, some of the concerns that the neighbors had as far as the maintenance. You know, I saw pictures of the lawn in some places 11 inches long, and 19 trees cut down at Watson Farms, and that might be a staff issue of enforcement of the site plans and stuff. But just so we don't get into a lot of other discussion during this public hearing about that, does Metro Realty have a response to all those issues that they'd like to voice?
So, and I will ask Jeff to come up here and make some remarks, if he's so inclined, but, you know, I will say that we, all of our properties are audited by, you know, the, the state agencies that, that allow us to develop. It requires cooperation with these state agencies. I would say that we are proudly held in high regard with respect to not just our construction, but our, our ongoing operation and our compliance, and really every element of our ownership and maintenance of these properties. That's not to say that there won't be, you know, occasional issues with maintenance as there are on really any property I would propose. But I would, this is really the first time that I think we have, as an organization, has, have stood in front of this commission and have had maintenance been raised as an issue for us. So, I would hope that the, the issue would not be raised when we're proposed, would be more of an ongoing conversation, because I think one of the benefits of us as an organization is that we are local, and we have never sold a property that we've developed, and if there is the perception of an issue or an actual issue, we would, we would really welcome to hear about it so that we can address it.
Okay.
You want to add to that, Jeff?
Hi, Jeff Sager, Metro Realty. So, we take great pride in the way that we maintain all our buildings, be they commercial or residential. And as you know, for the last.
Please respect the speaker.
For the last 20 some-odd years, you know, we've had the privilege of having a woman who is a South Windsor resident basically coordinating activities in this marketplace, Christine Nassau, both the leasing, but overseeing, you know, maintenance and things like that. So, there is difficulty hiring good maintenance people and finding them. It's been a problem since the pandemic. I don't know when those pictures are taken or what the specifics were, but I will tell you candidly, I have never been confronted with, before, with failure to maintain at any level. We just, in other words, that's just, I think you know that about us, that's just not our mindset. We're, we're not people who are looking to save money and, you know, drive the bottom line so that we can sell it and make a profit. We're here for the long term. It doesn't pay to maintain things in a second-rate fashion, because it winds up costing you more later. Now, having said that, I can't tell, I can't respond specifically, because I don't know exactly what we're talking about. You've got my commitment, if, if I'm given that information, I'll get you an answer by noon tomorrow. And you also have my apologies if it's been an inconvenience standing, but, but we, we take maintenance very seriously. We don't trust anybody to maintain our properties. That's why we have our own maintenance company. And, you know, I don't think anybody else in the marketplace does. We do all our own maintenance, because we want it done right. You get some third party to do it, and just candidly, if we say we want it done correctly, but three or four of the people that they work for just want to save money and do it on the cheap, then when they do ours, they're confused. It's like, okay, well, I'm going to do yours right, and that, so you need to have your own people, and you need to train them. So, a little bit of a long-winded answer, but I'm passionate about our maintenance company. I think our maintenance company defines us. And if there's been a misstep, you have my apologies. I'd like to see the information, and I'd like to get to the bottom of it.
Okay, I'm, I'm sure town staff will share any information. And I, I do think it's important that the residents have a avenue or some type of program call. I don't know if it's written complaints or some process to work through their issues.
Yeah, we have staff, we have two people at all times fielding phone calls to take any problems that come in, lack of a better description, a dispatcher. And they'll process the information, if it's something they can walk the tenant through, if it's a mechanical thing and they can help them, programming a thermostat, something like that. But if, if it requires maintenance, they're dispatched, you know, I can't say that day, but, you know, within a day or two to take care of the problem.
Okay. And again, that, it's not something typical with a zone change.
Understood.
But it is a concern of the residents, so I, I want to do my best to make sure it's addressed.
We have a big data set here in town, right? We have five communities in town, and you folks know our communities, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll ask Mr., Commissioner Wagner.
Yeah, I would say that I drove around a couple of your neighborhoods today, and there's probably a difference between what's visible and what's actually happening inside, you know, plumbing issues or so on, but the appearance of the lawns is pretty poor, okay? It looked like you're definitely not mowing them once a week. I don't know when you are mowing them. So, I think the, at least from what's visible by an outsider driving around, there is, there's an issue. Now, is it important to have the lawn mowed every week, or is it okay to allow it to grow six inches or eight inches? I think to have pride in the place you live, it is important, so I would hope that you would take a look at that.
Okay. I don't have anything else at this minute. What I'd like to do is I hear from the public, and we have a few letters to read.
So, the letters were posted on the website.
Oh, they were?
Yes, so we've only got one letter since then, and the individuals in the audience, so I don't know if she wants to read it herself, or she'd like it to be read into the record.
Okay.
Vicki.
So.
Your com, your question, see. This is, yeah, it's a public comment, so I don't know if you want to read it, or. These were, these were submitted after all of the comments were sent to the commissioners, so they have not received this. This is public comment since you've received your agendas.
Right. So, if you would like to speak on your letter, you're welcome to come up, or we will just read it into the record.
That you can read it into the record, I have many other things I would like to share that are not on that.
Okay.
Maybe at the end of public comment, we'll read whatever's left.
Okay. So, at this time, I'm going to open up to the public. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Please step forward.
So, Chairman, we are going to be using the timer. I want to make sure Josh is ready for that.
Yeah, we, we do have a three-minute limit, so if.
A new timer that's been installed right over there for the public to be able to see where they are.
If anybody, like I said before, cannot address their concerns in three minutes, they're welcome to return back to the mic after the other speakers have spoken.
Good evening. Ed laryngitis today. Commissioners, my name's John Parks. I'm here on behalf of several of the neighbors, and I have three important points that I would like to be able to make without interruption. I represent probably half of the people in this room, and I, I think at least one of them could give me their three minutes, and I could be done with this. But I've put a lot of, a lot of time into the, what I've just handed you, and it's pretty important, and it's information that you have not heard so far in this, this hearing. And it goes like this. In 2004, Metro Realty got a special exception and site plan approval for 196 units of elderly housing at 440 Buckland Road, application 03-83P. There are restrictive covenants that last for 40 years regarding age and income requirements, and those restrictive covenants are recorded in land records, and.
On the bottom, the red, there you go.
And those restrictions run with the land. We're only 20 years into that 40-year restriction, and now, Metro Realty is coming and asking for a change of zone of that dotted line or the triangular piece to have affordable housing. You can't have affordable housing and elderly housing with their different requirements and their different restrictions on the same parcel of property. You can't double-dip. In 2003, this commission required that covenant to be filed, and because of it, they allowed 196 units. Now, .3 acres of that is being separated, which was. Now, .3 acres of that is being separated, which was necessary for the original approval and added to this so that another, more high-density housing can happen. Now, this doesn't apply to the piece they're getting-
Excuse me, one second. If members of the audience are willing to yield their time, okay. I've seen three members raise their hands, four, so you've got another 12 minutes or so anyway.
Kind of technical and these restrictions- These deed restrictions are attached to the handout as exhibits. And so, um, the two types of restrictions, the ones being asked for and the ones that already exist are mutually exclusive on that triangular piece. Now, if you look in your, um, in your booklet, about halfway through, it's called Exhibit D, you'll see what I'm asking for. And Commissioner Wagner, this map really addresses the question that, that you raised as to what the, um, what property we're requesting a zone change on. And it's a crude, crude drawing, I apologize, I did it myself. But the bright yellow is 240 Demming Road. That's the church property. There are no restrictions like I'm talking about on that. The triangle with the arrow pointed for 440 Buckland Road is, they're also asking for a zone change on that. And that, that property is currently part of Berry Patch and part of what they needed for that approval and now they're separating it. So, the income and age restrictions are different because elderly is 62 and over and that runs, that's restricted for that triangular piece for the next 20 years. But affordable, there is no age restriction. On elderly, they have their own income requirements and on affordable, they're different. So, you, you've got an issue with, it looks like it's kind of an olive green, but that's because when you use your G.I.S. map and you put in an address and you put in 440, it makes it darker so you can see which one you picked. So, those two green berry patches are really the gateway zone, just like, uh, the 240 Demming Road. Now, even if, so, so that, that can't happen. So, even if those restrictions did not exist, this parcel, this wedge, we'll call it, uh, does not comply with your MAHZ zone. And if you look at it, you can understand why because section 7.22, and I've done a compliance of regulation within my, uh, handout there that makes this very clear. I go through every section, it'd be on page three. I go through every section of 7.22 and in red next to it, I comment why it doesn't, um, comply, but I can make it really simple for you. In order to be eligible for this MAHZ zone, the parcel either has to be zoned AA30 residential, which you can see from the map it's not, or be adjacent to residential property. And if you look at that green wedge, it's commercial, so it's not residential, and it's surrounded by commercial. So, now we have two reasons why the wedge can't be part of this application or can't be approved by this commission. The third reason is in addition to the restrictive covenants that last for 40 years that were put on with the elderly housing approval back in 2003, there's an additional conservation easement that is on that triangular piece, um, that, uh, will conflict with this application. They were actually in the box with this application until they shaved that piece off of the Berry Patch and tried to double dip with that. And there's three valid reasons why that triangle can't be part of it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there anyone else? Uh, first off, uh, and I, I skipped my normal procedure, is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this application? Please step forward. Hearing and seeing none, is there anyone who would like to speak against or have questions or concerns? A gentleman in white shirt here.
I would like to speak to the gentleman from Metro Prime.
Um, excuse me?
Yes.
One of my other commissioners said you might have yielded your time, but, um, there, there was plenty of people that yielded, so, yeah, okay. So, yeah. And just a reminder, when people come up, if they could sign in on the sheet and, uh, when you're talking, try to have your mouth about three inches away from the microphone because it doesn't pick up that well out here.
Is that there?
If you're closer, it's a lot better. Thank you.
Is that better?
Yes.
I would like to speak to the person from Metro Prime.
Could introduce yourself?
My name is Charles Werner and I live at 2 Berry Patch. And I was listening to his talk about how wonderful the maintenance is at Berry Patch. I'm here to tell you, it is not. It is a mess. The lawns are bad. I had, uh, trees uprooted, the stumps are left there and they have left them there and have not took them out or put, or put trees in. The appliances are 20 years old. We have been asking for new appliances and they tell me no all the time. And until they fix this, I cannot see them, uh, this zoning commission doing anything as far as approving anything for them to build anywhere else in this, in this town. If they can't take care of what they got, why should they get something else? Okay, um, and I'd like to hear this gentleman come back up and explain to me why I have to pay $35 a month extra since the lease, my, signed my lease for, for no appreciable difference in how we live. And how is he going to do that? How are they going to do that with, uh, uh, disadvantage, intellectually disadvantaged, disadvantaged people? I just don't see it and I'm sorry, um, I do think that affordable housing is, is an important issue and anybody who's, uh, got some kind of problem with people who are disadvantaged and can't afford it, they got a problem with me. I don't, I don't try to be angry, but I am angry by being lied to repeatedly by people from, from Metro Prime. They need, they need to come clean and, uh, explain this to me so that I can understand it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like? And the lady in the green pants will be next.
For the record, Tom Delnecki, 130 Felt Road and within eye shot of Berry Patch. Over the past few years, I've had a number of outcries from the residents about what's going on with the maintenance. And I hope everyone looked at the pictures I sent in because I was shocked. Because there was areas where the grass was up to 12 inches and I put a ruler there because I couldn't believe what I was seeing. And the grass was tall where people would walk to their unit. And I'm saying to myself, we have a tick problem. And how do you chase ticks away? You don't give them cover. I drove over there today because they had done some work a couple of weeks ago to attempt to bring it into some kind of state of repair, state of maintenance, state of the way it should be. And got out of the car, took a ruler, and again, we've got grass growing up five, six inches. So, if you're going to have folks that are challenged and they're going to have that kind of maintenance by their unit, and likewise for the seniors at Berry Patch to be exposed to that kind of maintenance, and again, I hope everyone looked at those pictures because they were telling, it was a very clear story, that there's a disconnect on what should be occurring and what is actually occurring and what is not occurring. And I, in that letter, and I, I don't know if the blight, blight ordinance would apply to that facility, but with the level of grass and the state of the property there and it's getting back to that point where the level of grass is coming up, is it applicable for the blight ordinance to apply to a property like that? Because the seniors deserve to have a decent place to live. And again, there is a disconnect, in my opinion, from what we hear and from what this cell phone camera picked up clearly. And that concurs with the gentleman from unit number two. So, I, I don't know if there's an answer tonight pertaining to the blight ordinance, whether the blight ordinance would apply, but if you're going to have these units, they have to be properly maintained. And one of the esteemed commissioners made the comment about, is it getting mowed at least once a week? I doubt it very much because I've got people at Berry Patch that call me all the time. And why am I talking about that? I think it's indicative of what you could very well end up with on Demming. I thank you for the opportunity to make a couple of comments here and, uh, I look forward to whatever your deliberations comes up with, but I have grave concerns.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Order, please. Michelle?
I can, um, report, I did receive an email from Pam Alva, who is the blight officer. Um, she had been forwarded the pictures, this is dated August 7th. She forwarded the pictures, she went out there and the maintenance company was trimming shrubbery at the time. She did not find that it met the level of, of blight complaint that would need enforcement. So, she will monitor the situation, but at this time, um, she does not have a concern that it's a blighted property.
Okay, thank you. If you would. And if you could, you can just bend this right down to you?
I beg your pardon? Okay, thank you.
And I'll, I'll remind the speakers before they start or after they get done, if they could sign in on the sheet.
I will.
Okay, thank you.
My three minutes. Uh, my name's Anna Mae Davis, Nine Ridge Road, South Windsor, and now I'm too close. I've lived in town 66 years and I lived at the top of the hill on Demming Street for 44 years. I have a stop sign on, put in on my property that everybody has to stop, but they don't. I spoke previously and you already have so much input already, people against it, on the reasons for not allowing the application change. We were involved in the original application because we didn't want stop and shop at the end of our street. So, we called a gateway and we put it in the double A and everything that went in was not supposed to be going. No laundromats, no liquor stores, no, all sorts of restrictions, but that's way back then. I do want to reiterate, and I'm going to ask each one of you commissioners, if you would please take a ride up Buckland Road, if you haven't already, and try and take a left and come up Demming Street. Just, just do that. And then after deliberations, you'll see what, that's the only concern I have. I have no concern of what was going in, this property being used for these reasons, but I don't think it should be there. Unfortunately, I'm all for whoever, for the low-income housing, for those that are marked, all of that. I think it's wonderful, they all should have their shelters. But I really would like you to, each commissioner, to go and just drive it and see what my concerns, not many concerns are. The traffic at that Buckland Road left-hand turn is terrible. You have five driveways all coming in fighting, waiting for you to come by. I want to remind you, commissioners, that your commission is one of the most powerful in this town, town government. And that includes inland wetlands. And your decisions affect all of us, no matter what it's about. And you are responsible, your top priority is our safety as residents in this town. So, whatever decisions you deliberate on, remember that it's going to affect us and that's the most important part. You must keep us safe to be able to live here. Thanks for listening and thanks for serving.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay, you'll be after her, after she gets done signing in. Thank you.
I'm Louise Richard. I live at 15 Berry Patch. I have only been a South Windsor resident for eight years since I've been there, but I spend a lot of time in South Windsor with grandchildren. And I have seen in the last eight years, all the traffic that's coming up, it's, Buckland is a lot more dangerous. They talk about sidewalks. If I take the path that I have not been able to use lately, you, there's no sidewalks up to the corner.
Josh.
You, you, sorry, you go to the credit union, you're on the grass. There's no, there's no sidewalks all the way. I feel the maintenance at Berry Patch, not only outside, but inside. They say they have a number to call. We call the number, sometimes it takes two or three calls before they come and take care of anything. Sometimes it takes them four to five visits to fix the problem. And then you want to give them an apartment where there's disabled people? How are they going to be able to handle this? After the last meeting, I had weeds on my patio that were taller than I was. I know I'm not tall, but weeds should not be taller than me. It just happens that the Monday after the meeting, they weeded my patio. The Tuesday after, they trimmed the bushes. That Wednesday, they mowed the lawn. It hasn't been mowed since. So, they are not maintaining it. We have people to call, but they do, don't do anything. They want us to provide things. They say, well, you broke it. Things break, lines break. It's always somebody else's fault. Yeah, we can talk to them, but they don't do anything. They trimmed some trees, a lot of the trees, the limbs are still out there on the paths. I was told they were going to take pine trees out. They had to wait till spring. I think we've had two springs since then, at least. The pine trees are still there. They are not maintaining it and I'm really worried, you're going to let them have another set of apartments to do this, that as they get older, they're just going to let it go? I don't think it's good for the town. Maybe someone else can do it and I, I don't live on Demming and I feel for the people. And maybe it should be somewhere else, but I really don't think that Metro should be handling it at all. Thank you for listening.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Gentleman with the red coat? Yes. Burgundy, rust.
Thank you. Getting tired sitting there. Uh, my name is Jack-
Could raise the microphone up, please? Thank you.
Sorry. My name is, uh, John McCabe. I live at 56 Gilbert Lane, uh, a little bit up the hill from where the proposed building is. Couple of, um, facts I would like to point out to you while you're considering this. Hopefully, it is not a done deal already. I grew up in New York City. I grew up in New York City. I didn't move out of New York City until I was fifty. So I know high-density living. We were concrete, to concrete. There was no place for green to grow, or tree to blossom, or fresh air to breathe. I don't know if any of you have lived in New York City, but it was, in the summers, it can be quite uncomfortable. Imposing this development in this area of South Windsor is further encroaching on what is little remaining green space in that part of South Windsor. We are currently surrounded by large assisted living centers, where hundreds of people live. We have Evergreen Walk across the way, we, there is a hotel over there, there is additional housing there. And as you pointed out, there are three other high-density building projects in the vicinity of where this next building project is to take place. To do this, we have to destroy numerous trees. I don't know if you realize this, but each tree is capable of producing about two-hundred-and-sixty pounds of oxygen annually. That's enough to support the life of four human beings, that's one family, one tree. In addition to that, each tree provides additional shade. You know, in Paris right now, there's a huge effort now to replant the city, because they're finding that the city of Paris is overwhelmed with climate change, because, partially because of the loss of trees in the city. New York City is suffering the same sort of consequence. With regard to the traffic, it was very nice to hear the traffic engineers describe the traffic in June, but unfortunately, we have twelve months a year here in Connecticut. I'd like to just give you a little bit of calculation I was doing. If we have fifty-two apartments, or fifty-five apartments, excuse me, that would probably be in the neighborhood of about a hundred-and-ten automobiles, making three or four trips a day, that's three-hundred-and-thirty trips per day, that's a hundred-and-twenty thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty trips per year. And you're telling me that we're not going to congest the traffic in that area, that we will not contribute to greater hazards, particularly for children who are on their way. By building this project, we will have to have a school bus stop there as well. I don't see how a school bus can enter that area, they're projecting fourteen kids.
Can you wrap up your comments, please? Or you're welcome to come up later.
There are some practical.
You hit your button.
I just want to wind up with the practicality of imposing high-density population in a small area that has been traditionally countryfied. We are quickly turning South Windsor into an urban center. It's becoming an industrial park. That's not why I moved here from New York City, I've seen that, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Please step forward. Gentleman with his hand up?
Good evening, Vince Attenisi from thirty-three Seeley Drive. As we know, this is about a zoning change. The previous meeting, we provided very specific, clear, and concise non-compliance to regulations relative to the South Windsor Housing Affordable Plan, the Planning and Zoning Commission Regulations, and the MHZ. There has been numerous letters with very specific, clear, and concise paragraphs spelled out how the development does not meet those requirements. It's not about the benefits of affordable housing, we know that, it's not about that. It's about approving a zone change. We hope the commission doesn't set the precedent by approving a zone change where the development does not clearly meet those requirements, and negatively affect the quality of life and the homes nearby. That's not the spirit of what the commission should represent. It's not what your fiduciary responsibility is. And we hope you vote no, because you have the ammo, based on the requirements, the letters, and the overwhelming negative response from the public. I think it's pretty clear the decision that can be made. There are other locations where the development can be met. The amount of points you're going to gain from this specific location is not going to move the needle. So the negative outweighs the benefit. So as, as we've heard, there must be a benefit to this zone change. There clearly is none, and you have the ammo to vote no. So we hope you, when you reflect and you think about this, is there going to be a lot of benefits to the public? And are you doing a service to South Windsor? We hope you have clear conscience when you make your decision. And in those letters, and I specifically submitted one, and I know there's a couple of them, that give the commission very clear ammunition, despite what has been presented by Metro Realty. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lady with the black, please.
Okay, I have, my name is Vicky Margiot. I live at thirty-two Seeley Drive. And if I go into overtime, I'll come back or get someone to yield. I'd like to reply to some of the comments made by Metro Realty earlier tonight. For traffic at this location, there really are four issues that aren't just the number of cars per unit time. First one is that deming, even though it has been made less steep, is still steep enough to have cars get stuck in the winter. There is ice that flows over the road, no matter how good of a job our town staff does. Deming is steep, and it is slippery. And the exact area that you need to be gaining speed to go up the hill is where we're going to be stopping for people turning into the new complex, or waiting for the school bus. There are days, and this is well before Costco, where all of deming was stopped, and I had to drive out and around block cars, maybe coming into, upcoming traffic, just to get to Seeley Drive. It's a real issue. The second stop is the impact of the bus kiosk, and the resultant queuing. The bus kiosk is going to be close to the residence property. If you have been on Route Thirty, when school gets out, and you see the pace at which the children move towards the bus, and that the bus driver has to wait for a parent or guardian to be there for some of the young ones, it can take several minutes for a single child to get off the bus. The queuing for that location, for the people turning up Buckland, there's already the M&amp;T Bank in Hanush, there's the residence, and then there's this, that are in pretty short order. I think that it will be an issue. The other issue, traffic-related, is that if this population truly does need to walk, they need to get to the bus stop on the other side of Deming. That, to cross Deming, you have to block traffic twice to be able to safely cross, because you have to cross Buckland, and then you have to cross Deming, because neither one of them is safe, with all the hills and everything else, you can't do it in one light. And there's already not enough queuing on Buckland Road for the left turn into, up the hill on Deming, or for the people that are now making a left turn down the hill to get to Tamarack Avenue, so they can get to Costco. Those queue lanes fill up. If you have to wait for a whole series of lights for the walk light during key areas, they will fill, and it will make this area not safe. I'll either come back, or. I, I can, okay.
We'll recognize that yield.
Okay. The next area is that one of the things that the traffic person said was a likely place, and it had ten times more traffic, was a coffee shop. Well, the coffee shop has a drive-through. They don't have the appropriate silverware. So in the beginning, the gateway zone was supposed to have no drive-throughs. Then there were bank drive-throughs. Then there was a bank, a drive-through for Panera, only if you had the right silverware. Then you guys allowed a drive-through for Shake Shack if it was pre-order. But still, there's no Dunkin' Donuts drive-through. So the traffic of a Dunkin' Donuts drive-through is not an appropriate traffic as a possible what-if. The other impact of traffic is the timing. Okay? If this was a medical office building, yeah, the total number of cars might be greater, but the lights that are coming out of the cars, and the timing that is coming out of the cars, would not be headlights into Raul's house at all hours of the night, because many people work different shifts, and all-ages housing comes with all-ages of traffic. So there's also the associated noise with that traffic twenty-four-seven. I can hear, I like to sleep with my window open, I can hear the traffic on deming, which has gotten much more severe lately. But one loud car, there's going to be fifty-five families in an area that in our residential zone would likely only have three families. That's a lot of cars, that's a lot of people, that's a lot of noise, so. And the roadway is currently not safely managing this, because that intersection, as Locke told you on the last meeting, is the highest accident rate in South Windsor. So it's not currently a safe intersection. Okay. Also, one interesting thing about traffic is that when I first fought things in the gateway zone, the traffic engineer described to me how the lights on Buckland could be timed such that you would be able to flow through all the lights with one stream. And the level, the standard for the care for traffic from the Planning and Zoning Commission was a smooth flow of traffic on Buckland Road. What we're satisfied, what we're living to now is the worst possible thing that the DOT will possibly accept has become our standard. We were told the gateway zone was not going to become the, you know, Berlin Turnpike. It's worse than the Berlin Turnpike right now. We have, we have failed. For schoolchildren, Tempo has school buses, I bet Tempo has more kids per unit. If you wait a few years for the kids that are currently living in one-seventy-five Oakland to grow up, I think the numbers, the school-aged children are going to rise. I think there's going to be children. From a walkable perspective, this is uphill. I've walked it, I've walked a stop-and-shop. And, somebody else? Okay. The, the day my gallon of milk leaked, leaked on my, in my backpack is the day I stopped walking home from stop-and-shop. But it's, we are going to have, we are going to have shopping carts. They're already on Buckland, and now they're going to be on Deming, because people are not going to carry their groceries. From a gateway's requirement standpoint, that Mr. Tripp said that he would take care of, there are noise restrictions in the gateway zone, especially when you can plow, plow properties, when you can empty dumpsters, and an overall forty-five decibel requirement. A commercial place would have to maintain a forty-five decibel noise at the property level. And I would take, I'm concerned about the noise from this, and that's not something that they are going to address. And people who live in the Cardinal Way area say they hear the dumpsters of the apartments near them being emptied at all times of day and night. So they may say that they have accommodated some of the gateway zone. Also, in the gateway zone, you're required to do everything possible to maintain trees. There's a stand of trees, greater than six caliper of ten oak trees, that are all being taken out. All the oaks are going. The best possible thing that you could plant are oak trees. They're going with this application. So there are aspects of the gateway zone that they have not addressed by this. They still have their dumpsters by the gazebo, if you look at the plans. And their gazebo area is getting narrower and narrower with their parking lot. There's no room, there's no recreation space in this particular design at all. With the newest thing, that area is much skinnier. From a maintenance standpoint. They plant invasive species, they let out invasive species grow through the siding at the, at houses that are on the second story. There's nineteen tree stumps that are still at Watson, there's tree stumps at Berry Patch. There's autumn olive growing everywhere. They planted invasive species at one-seventy-five Oakland. They don't maintain their properties. You're looking across the street from Maggie, who's on the garden tour next year, people who spend hours maintaining their property. When you talk about whether or not this fits in, Metro Realty shouldn't be allowed anywhere near town, they certainly don't maintain their properties. As to the affordable housing plan that was built in town, that put a little target on this particular area of town, just like creating the gateway zone, that plan was created without notifying a butters, and no, without notifying people that got put into this big targeted area. I moved next to cows, now you want to put apartments next to us. That's not what I bought. Okay, I'm almost done, believe it or not. You know, we have done many, many things without notifying current taxpayers, and current people who live in town of what we're doing. As adding, making this MAHC, it's spot zoning. Spot zoning is a bad practice. And my quality of life will be impacted by increasing the density of one family per one and a half acres to now have fifty-five families in basically five acres. It's just, there's so many people, there's going to be more noise, more congestion, more everything. We showed you what the balconies look like, our views that we pay a fortune in taxes for are going to go down. When you say that this area is surrounded by high-density, you look at this location, and you look to the south. And the south is residential, it's Raul's house and Maggie and Al's house. The south is residential. The east is residential. The west is the residence. The assisted-living people go to bed at seven o'clock at night. My mother-in-law was there. The thing that's closest to the residence is the memory care unit. The memory care unit, all go, people all go to bed at seven o'clock. That is not like high-density housing. It's, 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 it's pretty close to nursing care. And on the north, you've got the Berry Patch, which is, you know, elderly housing, and you've got the Village at Bellett-Buckland Court, which is additional assisted living. So all-ages apartment living does not fit in, it's not like housing in any direction. Those are my points, I, I'm not against the concept, but apartment buildings should go next to apartment buildings where they would fit in. It, they should not be going in next to residential zones, and you should not allow a zoning plan, and you should not allow some numbers to force you to make a bad decision just so you can meet some quota that you won't meet by this, no matter what. There should be planning, and this is something Michelle and the town should have been planning on for years, not to get stuck at this end and say, oops, we got to make a big change now, because otherwise, we're stuck. You know, we've had years and years and years to do something. Don't try to make it all up in one fell swoop, where you don't even make a difference, and make a bad decision just because, to meet some numbers. You should make a decision, make on the, based on the merits. And the merits here, I understand the goal, but they're not there. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Gentleman with the hat?
It's a military hat, thank you very much. I'll make it brief, because most everything has been covered. My name is Jim Byrne, I live at Berry Patch. I'll sign. And I'm a senior on Social Security, like everybody else at Berry Patch. Basically, I like living at Berry Patch. I've been at Berry Patch for seventeen years. The first ten years or so were wonderful. There were plenty of maintenance people and landscaping folks. In recent years, the situation has changed. Less people to keep Berry Patch looking respectable and presentable. Growing grass too high. Growing grass too high, overgrown bushes and shrubs. It should not have taken me three weeks of emails to get our bushes and shrubs trimmed and our grass mowed. Right now, tomorrow, when it's daylight, if any of you would like to take a little ride through Berry Patch, like Tom Del Nicky just said, it's elephant grass again. It may not be 12 or 11 or 10 inches, but it's up there. And the grass hasn't been mowed in two weeks and counting. It should be mowed weekly, in my opinion, in the summertime, or at least every week and a half. The last thing, rent increases. When I signed my first lease in 2006, I was told by the person in charge of the operation there that rent would go up every year annually, modestly, $20, $25 a month. And that's basically what happened. Until this year, in the last month, I got my new rent, and it went up $50 a month. That's double what it has been going up. Lastly, we need speed limit signs put back again. I think they were there earlier when I moved in there at 15 miles an hour. Berry Patch is a parking lot. There are people, including residents and guests, that speed in and out of Berry Patch. Don't stop at the stop signs, the two of them coming in from Oakland and from Felt. Not everybody, but a good number of people. And the other thing about speeding and keeping the speed down at Berry Patch, Berry Patch is basically filled, and I'm not being sexist, with little old ladies who drive and walk their dogs because most of the men are dead. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Please raise your hand. Gentleman in the pink shirt? And the gentleman in the red and blue after that?
Hi, my name is Craig Finn, and I live at 400 Demming Street. And I have lived there for 22 years. We moved to Demming Street because of the quietness of the area and the, you know, over the past 22 years, there's been quite a few changes. A lot of houses being built, and, you know, the traffic increase has, has been significant. We don't feel like we, we need any more change. We feel like there's been enough housing, new housing been put in the area and that the traffic that's currently going on, I, I work from home and I look out at the street every day, and there isn't a minute or two that I don't see a car going one way or another. And I just think it would be a poor decision to allow this to go on. Thank you.
Commissioners, my name is Locke Pho from 260 Demming Street. I just want to be quick and state some statistics. Don't, first thing, don't be wooed by some of the stats that were given to you. When they try to show students per unit, it's, that's students per unit, but rather you should be looking at it as students per acre. You're comparing it like-to-like things, apples-to-apples. What could have been there is, could have been five homes, and what is that compared to all these units? And then, what realistically looking at is, what do you compare that versus what it's currently zoned at, which produces zero students? Then I want to get to the traffic study. Traffic study was touched on as simply just saying, no abnormal traffic accidents, but it was said that six accidents were there recently, typically rear-end bumpers. And the type of those, those types of accidents are just people not paying attention. And I guess that goes right to my point from three weeks ago. You don't want pedestrians where people are just not paying attention. The, the number of six accidents is just reported accidents. It's not just every single week I see a broken taillight at that, at that intersection. Last week, a front light was in my front yard. So, accidents happen, they're not reported. You're putting pedestrians in, in a, in an unsafe spot. That's going to be dangerous. The last thing I want to talk about is the petition. I think Section 2 of what was voted on earlier today. I wanted to talk about the way it was calculated. When this application was first put in, it was said to be 240 Demming Street with a portion of something else, I think 440 Buckland. When we received our 100-foot Butters list, it was put in on the website and shown and calculated that this property in question was inclusive of not only the GD district of 4.8 acres, but also the one acres that is currently zoned as AA 30. That was used to calculate 100 feet for the Butters list. That's how you should be calculating the 500-foot when you look at the petition, at the question at hand. The statute says it's 20% or more of the area of the lots within 500 feet in the directions of, in, within 500 feet of all directions of the property included in the proposed change. The property, anybody that's questioning what the property is would go onto the GSI website and type in 240 Demming Street. You can click the, you can click your Butters calculation, and 240 Demming Street, that property is inclusive of the AA 30 zone. That's how it should be calculated. About, I, I don't know the exact time. I just need like 30 seconds.
Okay.
I don't know the exact time, but the calculation was changed to strip away the AA 30. What that did was nullify five of our signatures. I think that's important to note. Why? Why was that done? I mean, this is only to, I guess, force a two-thirds vote. I've seen time and time after, time and time again, all your votes have always been unanimous. It's pretty simple. But if somebody disagrees, shouldn't that raise a question? I, if I was you, I would welcome a two-thirds vote to vote on something this important. Subsequently, we did receive another signature that I would like to resubmit to the commission to review, to do a recalculation, and consider doing the calculation based on inclusive of the whole property as listed by the statute, which includes the AA 30 zone. That would put our five other, five other signatures back into the calculation. Can I submit it?
Okay, thank you.
Could I comment on the?
Please.
Zone change map? Okay, so the, the zone change regulations, when you prepare a zone change map, right in the requirements of the regulation, the zone change map has to include all the properties with 500 feet and what the acreage is within those properties. From the very beginning, that is what the zone chain map submitted by Metro showed. So, the zone change map and what properties were included within 500 feet was not changed. What was corrected as part of our normal course of correcting things is, they had not calculated acreages properly. So, I had a modified zone, and this was before the first public hearing, so this was all out on the website. The zone change map, if that had been used as the basis of their petitioning, that's what we use to determine whether or not they met the requirements. That is the official zone change map. And just a little history for the commission, back in 1996, when we had this type of petition submitted, it was after that that the commission put these requirements in the regulations to put the onus on the application to do all these calculations of how much acreage is within the 500-foot. It's prepared by a land surveyor. Our GIS mapping, which was what the applicant, or the petitioners used, there's a real qualifying statement right out there that this mapping is not survey quality, it shouldn't be considered survey quality. And quite frankly, you couldn't get the 500-foot radius from our GIS mapping because you can't get a portion of a lot, which is what the zone change has, is a portion of a lot. So, really, the, the map, and I, the DICE Attorney Parks map was on the website, which was, with the acreages, is, is the basis of, of calculating the 20%. And I do have a highlighted map here, be glad to show. So, my point is, we can't change the parameters of whether we include more land or not. The 500 feet is the 500 feet, and it's based on our regulations and...
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
So, we've had some good weather this time of year. Think about winter time.
If, if you could please introduce yourself to the...
John, John Samsel, 333 Demming Street.
Thank you.
Bring on winter. Last year was a very, very mild winter. Going forward, or going reverse, a couple of years ago, when the town comes in and plows at that intersection, the walkways are almost impassable because of the compact wet snow that refreezes overnight when the town plows. Not that the town doesn't do a good job, they do an excellent job, but they need somewhere to put that snow at that major intersection. And when they, when they pile it, they pile it on the entrance ramps for where people walk up on there. So, I've seen people crawling up and over there. So, think about the winter time, not just the beautiful weather that we're having right now. And speaking of snow, Commissioner Burstein brought up a good point a couple of minutes ago when he spoke concerning snow removal. Judging from this map up here, I don't see any snow removal areas to put snow or snowshelf. They've compacted the buildings very nicely that I don't think they were thinking about that three-foot storm that might come in that we had several years ago. I'm not wondering if that sidewalk in front of the buildings, it's going to be stacked on, so they got to jump out of the second-story window under the parking lot, or where the snow is actually going. Good, good point with snow removal on some areas. The sidewalk on the east side of Buckland Road, from about where it exits out from, I believe, the Berry Patch, down to the stoplight to the Terry Office Park. And then beyond, the sidewalk was added when the sidewalks on the other side were put in. That sidewalk is never shoveled or taken care of during the winter time since its existence. It only, they only come out to that point, and those people got to walk over the snowbank and walk down Buckland Road, reach over to hit the, the crosswalk thing if they're not slipping into the, into the road and getting hit. That, that's also a danger. So, think about, you know, the, the winter time, when, when you're, when you're voting on this. Several years ago, there was a sewer backup in one of the buildings in Buckland Professional Center. And I want to say it was about 12 to 15 years ago. Cost several thousands of dollars of worth of damage. I'm not sure where the sewer line is for this project and where it's going to. But with the, I, I got about 30 seconds.
Okay, thank you.
I've been told that there's a major dump that comes down through Avery Heights that dumps into Buckland Road at the bridge. And there was an almost overflow again several months ago. Now, since the overflow, the major overflow that backed up a building into four feet of sewage, the town has come out once a month to what they call flush that corridor underneath, underground with a truck blocking off the street. And I don't know how long that's going to start, going to continue before they fix that, that system that comes down from Avery Heights. And lastly, I think they ought to think about, you ought to think about building a second bus stop because I think that bus stop there at the Demming and Buckland is a carriage stop for shopping carts. Just, when you go by, just check it out, there's a lot of carts in there and no people. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak tonight?
Sheju David, 18 friends?
10:30.
So, whatever, I have, I mean, it has been called, but I would...
I'm sorry, I didn't get your name.
I was Sheju David.
Okay. And your address?
18 friends.
Thank you. Your microphone's off now. The button's on the bottom. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I would like to stress what others have said. Basically, who does it affect? It affects everyone from Slater between, on Demming, between Slater and Buckland. So, and if you look at the people who have said for it, none of them live in, in between these two streets. But everyone who has said, like, so that, that does tell us that, I mean, it, they don't, they are okay with it because it does not affect them. But we are the people who live in the area that this high-density apartments are coming. This is going to affect our quality of life, the traffic, and the traffic of 21 per hour, was that the new delta or is it including the high-density apartment? I am not sure. But whatever it is, many people have said that, and from the residents, that is going to affect us. Putting 55, and another gentleman did give the calculations, 100 cars is going to increase. You add, it's going to increase, it's not going to decrease. So, so it's going to affect everything, our investments in our properties. And also saying that the property value will not decrease doesn't help me. What would help me is if you have two properties, property, I mean, two towns, Town A and Town B, both are identically similar with the same geographic setup, and you put a high-density apartment in, in one town and you do not put in the other town, and see the property value after five years, the one, the town in which you put the high-density, if it doesn't increase, or if it increases by five, but whereas the town which didn't have it, didn't have the congestion, didn't have the, the traffic, the quality of life decreased, if that increased by 30%, then what, what did I gain? You know? So, that is what, that comparison, unless I see that comparison, it doesn't help me telling, it doesn't help to hear that property value will not decrease. We all have, consider these as an investment also, the, the taxes that we pay, the mortgage that we pay. These are investments, we think that we will retrieve some, something when we, at, at a later stage when we sell them. What else did I have? And yeah, the last thing I want to say is, whatever you have heard from the residents are actual data versus statistics that are provided by Metro Reality. Statistics are probability, they could happen, they could not happen. So, please do consider the residents, they're our concerns for, we, we appreciate all that you're doing, but do consider our concerns and our, our thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at this public hearing? Please step forward. Okay. Please? Yes, you, oh.
My name is Verandra Shah, and I live at 36...
Like you could raise the microphone up. I mean, raise it if you want, make it easier.
No, I, I think that should be good, right?
Okay.
So, my name is Verandra Shah, and I live at 36 Castle Road Drive. I just want to say that there are a lot of facts that have been presented to support the case that the high-density apartments, which change from 72 to 55, should be there. But again, facts are based on estimates, and they're based on facts which are not the fact in that situation or in that locality. It's based on, on numbers that have been developed in some other areas, or maybe those facts are based on some other facts which has estimates in it. So, if the decision of... So if the decision with regard to traffic or anything is based on the factual report that's being presented, the end goal is to make sure that those estimates can change at any point in time. Second thing is, there's a lot of emotion in the town saying that we should not do it, which again, as commissioners, you should take into consideration the fact that when so many people have their positions against it, there's something that, that doesn't work. And finally, again, as part of any town success, I believe there's something called wisdom, which considers the facts, which considers the estimates, which considers the emotions. But, but wisdom prevails at all. And I think you are on that chair, which brings wisdom to the whole decision making process. And I hope you, you bring that to the success of the town, to the success of the Demming Street area as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you sign in? And if the last gentleman could come up and sign in also, that would be appreciated. Okay, and if the lady would like the microphone now or?
Hi, everybody. I think by now you might know who I am. Margaret Glover at 247 Demming Street, right across from where this supposed project is going to be built or would like to be built. And I, everybody has said what I want to say. They've already talked about how you guys are the commissioners, you are given your positions by the voters and you work for us, I would say, those of us who live in South Windsor. You are to represent us and I want you all to remember that. Also, I live, again, right across the street and I would like Fuss and O'Neill to sit in my yard and count with me. I would recommend, I would welcome them. I'm a statistician. I used to do that in the Air Force and I do it now. And I don't know where their numbers are coming from, but they're not living there. None of you are living there. I and the rest of the people who have been in here tonight do live in that neighborhood. So we know what's going on. Also, it is not safe. I don't even want to cross the street from M&amp;T Bank over to where the carts are sitting now. Actually, the, the traffic button doesn't work. I've reported it like four times to the police department, to traffic, and it still doesn't work. You have to cross over to the other side where the residence is to cross the street. Thank you for taking note of that, Michelle. Also, it is not walkable. As Vicky mentioned in the last time, we took a bag of groceries from Stop &amp; Shop and it is not walkable for adults who are in our condition. And I like to think I'm pretty strong, but it was not really walkable. So also, at least I got a smile here, that's good. Also, and I agree with MAHC, as I said in the last time, I lived in MAHC in Manchester with my two kids. Which brings me to another point, all the statistics that Mr. Tripp has talked about for children, he's not considering multifamily affordable housing, all those ones from the, from the current position, they weren't MAHC apartments. You're going to get single moms like myself with like three or four kids, I can guarantee it, and none of his covered that. And again, it's been already pointed out by Vicky, he talked about multifamily zone buildings next to the proposed zone, that is not true. Like she said, the resident zone are elderly, memory care folks, that's not multifamily. The Berry Patch 2 is not multifamily, it's senior living only. So I'm not sure where you guys are agreeing that there's all this multifamily affordable housing around that location. And again, as everybody has said, from Jay to other folks here, please listen to those of us who do not want this in. Again, we all agree with it, we know you're under a quota, but put it somewhere that it makes sense, not smack dab in the middle of a bunch of single residential homes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at this public hearing? Hearing and seeing none. Commissioners, is there any reason to keep the public hearing open?
I did.
You were going to be asked after, but.
Oh, we had.
Yeah, let me, let me go for commissioners first. I don't see a hand. The gentleman who spoke already?
I wanted to clarify.
Uh, please. And you did sign in, right?
I did, I did. So it wasn't about extending 500 feet.
If you could just remind us who you are.
Lacfo spoke earlier. It's not about just extending the 500 feet. It's, it's, you said it, you put it on the applicant to provide the statistics for you. The applicant put in an abutters list for 100 feet who they mailed certified mail to, that's, I'm assuming legally required. I have a certified mail letter because I'm within 500, 100 feet. That's because I'm within 100 feet of the AA 30. I am not within 100 feet of the GD zone. So the applicant's already set what is going to be the subject property. So when you look at the petition for 500 feet, you have to, you have to stay with your rules, inclusive of both sides. I'm not saying let's change it from 500 to 600. I'm saying whatever the subject property is where you draw the perimeter around needs to stay the same. The applicant did it before and it needs to be the same. You can't just change the rules just to fit. You can't just wipe out five of our signatures to fit something to avoid some statute. That's all, that's the clarity I'm asking for and asking for that to be resubmitted.
Good, thank you. Okay, commissioners, is there any reason to keep the public hearing open? Commissioner Wagner?
I did have a couple, I hope, short questions that came out of this.
Okay.
Are you trying to close by 10:30 or? For, for the applicant. The Attorney Parks had a number of comments about that triangular piece. I'm not in a position to judge whether or not that's, his point is correct, but can this application do without that triangular piece?
So yes, we have well, as well have not, did not receive that communication from Attorney Parks until just now, so we haven't had a chance to fully review it. But I, yes, the application can proceed with some minor modifications without that triangular piece.
Okay. And then there was some question about other MAHC projects in other towns having maybe different student data. Is it possible to get the student data for MAHC projects in other towns?
Well, I think the reference to MAHC specifically is, is a reference to affordable, affordable apartments. And the calculation that I presented that, using the Rutgers multiplier that led us to the 14 school age children, that specifically accounts for different factors applied for different affordabilities of apartments. So that would include that.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. And as far as what happens in other towns, Steve, I think we've had issues with numbers that we've used from other towns, but they've been fairly accurate when we've used numbers from South Windsor, Border Vet and our experience with residence, apartments and stuff. So I've asked commissioners, any reason to keep the public hearing open? I'm not seeing any. I was going to ask town staff, I was going to ask the developer. So I'll ask the applicant. If you'd like to make closing comments or anything like that, this is the time.
Attorney Hollister for the record. We'd love to close the hearing, but unfortunately, whatever Attorney Parks has given you tonight, if I, if I heard what he was saying, he's asking to disqualify the application as a whole because of the way, because of some restrictive covenant from 2004. I took a brief look at it, I couldn't make head or tail of it. It's not something I could respond to on the fly. I, I need to point out to the commission that everything that the applicant has submitted in this hearing has been available to Attorney Parks and his clients days, if not weeks, in advance. I made a personal point several days ago of making sure that he was apprised of our materials in advance of tonight. We did not receive any reciprocal courtesy. If I had received what he filed with you tonight, even this morning, we might have been able to close the hearing. But I cannot in good conscience, representing my client, close the hearing when there is potentially an unsolved legal question and I'm sure you're going to rely on Attorney Corella. So with that, the applicant's request is that we need to continue the hearing to give us an opportunity. And I will say on the record, I will file my written response well in advance. So you have it and Attorney Parks have it and there will be no surprises when we come back.
Okay, Michelle, based on that, do we have the timeframe to allow?
No, we would need the applicant to grant us an extension of time.
Grant.
Okay, so we'll, a 30 day extension of time and we'll plan on this for the September 12th is our next meeting.
Then I will need to get a motion to continue the public hearing for the purposes of resolving this issue and this specific issue only.
Move that we continue.
Microphone, please.
I move we continue the public hearing to September 12th for the purpose of resolving the legal issues raised by Attorney Parks.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Is there any way to ask us if we need to?
Um, I'm, I'm sorry, we're in the middle of a motion right now. One thing under discussion, Michelle, is there any other reason to keep the public hearing open other than that issue?
There's no reason that staff has for keeping the public hearing open, no.
Okay. So we do have a motion on the floor and it's been seconded. Is there any other discussion? And I just want to point out, Commissioner Vituri left, so Commissioner Bernstein, you are seated and voting on this motion. So if there's no other comment, questions, we'll vote on the motion to continue with the stipulation it's to resolve this legal issue. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's approved and it's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, with that, by our bylaws, unless we extend the meeting by 10:00 PM, we do not go back into our regular business, so we are effectively adjourned.